I think we are live. I'm just gonna double check. We're gonna wait one minute here. Great, alright, we are good to go. Welcome to the Agoura Hills Planning Commission meeting. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written public comment, please complete a comment card for each agenda item and submit it to our city clerk before the public comment portion of that item. I will now call this meeting into order. I'm gonna defer to our vice chair Reinhardt for tonight's pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Great, thank you very much. I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote for tonight's planning commission.
Thank you, good evening. Commissioner Platzer?
Present.
Commissioner Sharon? Commissioner Stein?
Present.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Present.
Chair Roth?
Present.
Chair Roth, you have a quorum with Commissioner Sharon absent.
Great, thank you so much. With Commissioner Sharon's absence, she has submitted a request for an excused absence. Do I have a motion and a second to approve her request?
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve Commissioner Sharon's absence.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second the motion to approve her absence.
Great, thank you very much. I'll defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, moving along, we are now gonna approve tonight's agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve the agenda, please state your names?
Vice Chair Reinhardt moves to approve the agenda.
And a second?
Commissioner Stein seconds.
Great, and I'll now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, thank you very much. We are now gonna move to tonight's public comment section. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject-matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. I know there's a number of you tonight, so just make sure it's for your agenda item if you are gonna submit a comment card. If you do have something to distribute, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the city clerk to distribute on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the planning commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to our city clerk. Do we have any public comment cards?
Thank you, we did not receive any written correspondence, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Great, you all did your homework, thank you. Great, now this section is our consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. Do we have any public comments on tonight's consent calendar?
We do not.
Great, are there any questions from the commission on tonight's consent calendar? From the commissioners? Great, I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent calendar.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to accept the consent calendar.
In a second?
Vice Chair Reinhardt moves to second.
Great, thank you. I'll defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, thank you very much. Moving along to our first item tonight, which is item number two. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution to approve a conditional use permit number PZ 2025-111CUP to allow for onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages, both type 41 and 47 ABC licenses, at an existing restaurant, pool cabana, and event space. I will now open the public hearing in order to our city associate planner Eric Wong. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Roth, commissioners. The item before you today is a request to reclassify an existing establishment's alcoholic beverage license. So tonight I'll cover the site and vicinity, the background, scope, existing conditions, and staff recommendations. Starting with site and vicinity, the location of the proposed alcoholic service will be in an existing recreational complex located within the Lake Lindero Country Club at the corner of Lake Lindero Drive and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The complex is Zone CR, or Commercial Recreation, and a drainage overlay, Zone CR-D, also traverses the site along Lindero Creek to the west. The complex comprises of a restaurant, driving range, golf course, tennis court, pool and seating area, and event space within multiple buildings. So for some background, in 2009, city council adopted ordinance 09-362, which added sections 9, 3, 9, 6.1, 0.2, and 0.3 to the zoning ordinance, requiring that any new proposed alcohol beverage sales obtain a conditional use permit. Prior to the adoption of this ordinance, the state's Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC, issued licenses directly to applicants. Any license obtained prior to adoption is considered an existing non-conforming use, and therefore may be conveyed to succeeding tenants as long as the type, area, and time of service does not change. So, the applicant is seeking to reclassify their existing type 51 license to a 41 or 47. This is because a type 51 only allows alcoholic beverages to be served at a members-only club, while a type 41 or type 47 allows service to the public. As part of the project, the applicant is also requesting to expand their service area to the existing enclosed pool area and event space. Therefore, the request for a conditional use permit to serve alcohol in an existing restaurant is warranted. Currently, the applicant has applied for a type 41 license, but has expressed interest in pursuing a 47 in the future. As a type 47... As a...sorry. As a type 47 is not... As a type 47 is not... Requires a lottery system, and therefore is not perfectly...sorry. So, as a type 47 is lottery-based, there's no guarantee that the applicant be issued one by ABC. So, to reduce the burden on the applicant, the draft conditions of approval for a type 41 license or 47 should be... Should the applicant obtain one within two years of permit issuance? So, the...to explain the differences between 41 and 47, a type 41 actually will both require alcohol to be consumed onsite on a bona fide eating establishment, meaning that most purchases must be for food. Additionally, servers must be certified for responsible beverage service, meaning that there's a minimal chance that alcohol is accidentally served to minors. The difference between a 41 and 47 really comes down to the types of alcohol the holder is allowed to serve. A 41 allows only beer and wine, while a 47 allows for distilled spirits. As a type 51 allows for general consumption, which means beer, wine, and spirits without the need to serve food, alcohol service intensity would be reduced if a 47 is issued and a 41 is issued. That means a alcohol service would be further reduced because no distilled spirits would be allowed to be served. So, as previously mentioned, the applicant is seeking to expand their alcoholic beverage service area. In addition to the existing restaurant and patio area, the expanded service area includes the pool cabana and event space as shown on the map highlighted in red. All areas are connected to the kitchen and enclosed by walls. Public views and potential noise would be screened by the existing enclosures as well as the distance between the complex and surrounding uses. Currently, there's a tenant called Decker Kitchen that operates out of the restaurant and serves food at the restaurant patio. It operates Tuesdays through Sundays from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and is open to the public, which is out of the existing license's scope, hence why Lake Lindero Country Club is seeking reclassification. As shown below and further in the staff report's attachments, the proposed expanded service areas are entirely enclosed and located within the middle of the property hidden from public view. So, in addition to Lake Lindero Country Club's type 51, the following nearby establishments sell alcohol for consumption on and/or off-site. This includes the Hills Bottle Shop, which is off-site general, which means distilled spirits, beer and wine. The 7-Eleven also, but that is just beer and wine. And Winter's Pizza is actually onsite, which is only beer and wine. As part of staff's review, the project was distributed to LA County Sheriff's Department for comment. LASD stated that there have been no alcohol-related incidents in the area, and the proposed alcohol service area and proposed reclassifications would not overburden law enforcement activity. Therefore, staff respectfully recommends Planning Commission approve conditional use permit case number PZ 2025-111CUP, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings of the attached draft resolution, and to make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you, staff is available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. We will move on to commissioner questions of staff. Do any commissioners have any questions of staff tonight? Commissioner Stein?
First question, I'm unclear who the applicant is. Is it Lake Lindero Country Club? Is it the property management, or is it Decker Restaurant?
So, the applicant is the operator, so Gulf Properties.
Okay, and so my understanding right now is Decker operates from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Previously, I know that the golf course used to serve alcohol, I believe, from sunrise to sunset. So, part of my concern is just what... How are we gonna impose just the hours of operation? Is it gonna just be Decker's operation? Because that's how I'm reading it, is from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So, there'll be no other alcohol served any other time at any other location on the premises?
That is correct, that's put in the conditions of approval. So, if they were to want to change that, or anyone else comes in and wants to change those, they would have to apply for a CUP.
And then so therefore the applicant is gonna be the one who's gonna be responsible for maintaining the responsible beverage services, you know, making sure that the employees... And so, part of the other thing is, I've been there before. I haven't been there since Decker opened up, so I did not know that the hours were just reduced. But how are they gonna be able to control where the alcohol maybe gets ordered at a pool? Then it walks...you know, somebody walks off the pool area, the cabana? Is there gonna be...how are they gonna restrict the movement of, you know, somebody with a drink?
So, part of this is ABC will be kind of the enforcement agency for RBS and just alcohol control in general. The city's kind of purview is just, for now, is just allowing the use.
Obviously then, it's really just gonna be operating as it is right now, other than that now they're just gonna be complying to be able to sell to people that are not members of the club. I'm gonna defer any other questions in case the applicant hears us speak.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Platzer, do you have any questions?
Yes, with 47, it says it requires a lottery. What is the lottery? What does it entail?
So, for at least this area, ABC's 47s are based on a lottery system, which means that you're not guaranteed to be issued a 47 even if you apply, which is why the applicant currently is applying for a 41, because a 41 is issued straightforward, there's no...there's no chance involved. A lottery is...a lottery is randomly selection from all the applicant pools.
So, there's several people in this lottery, and then who picks, who gets the 47, and who doesn't?
Staff is unsure how ABC chooses the recipients for 47s.
If I may jump in here too. You're clear, ABC is the state control board, correct?
Correct, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Platzer. Vice Chair Reinhardt, any questions?
Yes, thank you. So, this is...as you...as you previously stated, this is...this is just to change from a members-only facing interface with the, you know, customer to a offering a public option and non-members-only.
Correct, so we're just allowing them.
Okay, given the current makeup of the Country Club with the event space, and as I understand it, this would allow them to serve in, you know, basically what would be considered the common areas of the property, the pool and cabana, the additional event space, and the restaurant. Does this...and this is being operated not by Decker Kitchen, but by the management company that the HOA employs, correct?
So, are you...are you asking whether the ABC license holder is Decker Kitchen or the operator? Or are you...
I'm just trying to determine...so, so this is a...this is a completely new permit that would be public-facing, and I'm trying to understand the chain of custody of whom it would belong to. So, it would belong to the management company, not Decker Kitchen, that is...or is Decker Kitchen a wholly-owned subsidiary and operating under the premise of the management company that the HOA employs?
Mr. Chair, if I may. So, the way these permits work is it's actually tied to the property, so it would run with the property. So, regardless who's serving the alcohol, if it's the restaurant or the property owner, it runs with the property.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The other clarifying question I had is, with this being an event space, if this space is used by an outside group, like for example, if it's rented out for a special event, like a wedding, or, you know, other such occasion, then is that license...then the...this license would not include any sort of alcohol that would be served as part of that special event, correct?
So, tonight we are analyzing this particular use for the restaurant space. I don't know what other permits, for example, outside vendors would need to come in and use, but it wouldn't be under this permit.
That's just what I was asking for, was clarifying, that this is specifically related to the restaurant space and sort of the day-to-day operations.
That's correct, and when you have a temporary event and have separate vendors come in and they're serving alcohol, they have to obtain their own alcohol licenses.
Right, that I am aware of from my own experiences with events, so, okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood where this was falling as far as the level of responsibility. Thank you, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I have a few questions, this is Chair Roth. Actually, to double click on that, just to be clear, the proposed use area is actually...does expand beyond the restaurant. It is to the cabana and that event space. So, one of my questions was also gonna be, so to reiterate, what if...yeah, what if, you know, like, a wedding happens? I know there's been some art shows there, I've actually attended one where alcohol was being served. So, just curious, just wanna absolutely make sure, if we proceed with what is proposed to us tonight, that future, you know, wedding events, art shows, whatever is planned for the event space has a pathway to serve other alcohol, should they choose? Or if ultimately the type 47 licenses is awarded to Lake Lindero, does that supersede any other...like, right, does that preempt the other processes that you just mentioned a second ago?
Typically, it works on a complaint basis with ABC as the enforcement agency. So, if there was a situation where they were operating and having alcohol outside of their established boundary, then that would become an enforcement issue with ABC.
A question that I had, we've had alcohol-related permits come before us before, I think in reverse order. And so, as a point of clarity, I understand that the applicant will have to apply for that 47 license, which is a lottery, if they ultimately succeed. Can you clarify, will they have to return to Planning Commission and/or City Council or amend their permit to proceed with the 47? What does that process look like?
So, if you look at the draft findings in front of you this evening, it's...the resolution is set up such that you are approving both a 41 and a contemplated 47. So, if they decide...if they get their 41, decide they wanna come back into a 47, they wouldn't need to come back to you, but they...there are conditions related to, you know, what timeframe they would need to get the 47, et cetera.
Great, okay, so if those conditions aren't met, or if they've... Were unsuccessful their first lottery, attempt later, it could trigger coming back. But right now, the way the ordinance is built is to assume that within the two-year period, they'll receive that, and then it's a ministerial process with city staff, correct?
That's correct, so you're authorizing both the 41 and 47 if you so choose, and you can make all the findings for both types of permits.
Great, thank you very much. I think that concludes my questions. Are there any further questions from commissioners? Yep, Commissioner Stein?
I just wanna be clear, so currently they're operating on a 51-type license, which allows them to sell beer, wine, and distilled drinks to patrons, members only. But they have been serving alcohol, beer, and wine to the public, and they're trying to correct this. I just wanna make sure I am understanding this properly.
That's correct. I believe they were unknowingly serving alcohol outside of the bounds of their current license, and it was brought to the attention of ABC as well, so that's how we're here.
And then I also wanna make sure, because I saw in the findings that sheriff department has not had any issues at all, no complaints about undueling, you know, drunkenness or anything from the premises. So, there shouldn't be any issues from that side.
That's correct.
Any further questions? Otherwise, I've got one more. Commissioner Platzer? Commissioner Plaizer?
What happens if they get the 41 or the 47, they misbehave, and what happens?
So, if they violate one of our conditions, then we can potentially revoke the conditional use permit after we notify them properly, and they don't correct the violation within a certain established timeframe. Also, ABC would be able to revoke their license as well. So ABC is the ultimate issuer of the alcohol license itself, and the city approves the land use. So we essentially could revoke the land use approval, and ABC could revoke the license itself to serve alcohol.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Plaizer. Chair Roth here. I have one more question on the hours of operation. I think they're almost kind of opposite to what Commissioner Stein, I think, was framing, but 11 to 5, Tuesday through Sunday, to me, is quite limiting, and almost limiting to an extent that it could be detrimental to the applicant down the road. So I know we're going to, I presume, one of the folks, fine folks here is the applicant, so we can hear from them, but just curious to know if there is a request tonight to shift the hours of operation, what that process would look like from the perspective of us as the Planning Commission? Do we need to revise the ordinance, or can we proceed with amending language, that if then it's ultimately appealed, it goes to council, et cetera? But like, can we, can we proceed if the applicant asks for certain hour, hours of operation changes?
Yeah. You, you could do that. You could basically accept staff's recommendation and then change the hours of operation specifically.
Great. Thank you very much. Last opportunity for questions. No? Okay. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose?
I drive by the property because it's in my neighborhood.
Fantastic. I regularly hit golf balls at the property. And as I think I mentioned, or maybe I didn't, but I have attended one of the events in which alcohol, I was unbeknownst to me, being sold under the improper license, so, but glad we're here tonight to move forward. Great. So moving on, we are going to now defer to the applicant. You and/or your representatives will have a total of 15 minutes for your presentation. I don't know if the applicant is here. Fantastic. I see an applicant coming up. When you come up to the podium, please adjust the microphone and watch the red light on the podium. When you see the yellow light, that means you will have one minute to wrap up your comments. Thank you for being with us.
Perfect. The red light hasn't gone on yet?
I can't hear him, and I'm not seeing a light.
I got no light. Do you, are I on?
You can just mic up just slightly.
Yep. You guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Robbie McDonald. I'm the general manager of Lake Linderoe Golf Course, also representing Lake Linderoe HOA, the owners of the property. To answer the question, as far as hours of operation for the property, generally, it opens at 7:00 a.m. and it closes at sunset. So it navigates with the time change. Historically, it operated with the 51 license that it was given 50-plus years ago. At that time, they were selling out of the shop, they were selling out of a restaurant space. My company, Western Golf Properties, who I'm employed by, we've had the property now under management for five years. And this all came to light when ABC, you know, acknowledged the fact that that license was member-only. Even though it was historically known as Lake Linderoe Country Club, it had always been open to the public. So HOA dues allow the members to use the tennis courts and the pool in their dues. Golf would be a separate membership that they pay $36 a month. The rest of our revenue is public-generated. So with that, in the time that we were there, you know, we, we have been selling all categories of alcohol under that license. And then when we started, when we came in contact with ABC on this, we immediately shut down operations with Decker Kitchen, who was operating under that license as well, renting the restaurant space, the kitchen, and the event space. Decker Kitchen stopped operations in September. As far as the restaurant space, he continued to honor contracted dates that he had for the art show and maybe a few other things. But outside of that, he has not operated in the month of November, outside of one event. So shop-wise and restaurant space, we have not sold anything. We've tried to wait this process out, worked with Eric Wang, who has been great on this, with the information. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great. Thank you very much. Before we move on to all the comments, I may now defer to our commissioners if they have any questions for you. And then after you'll be seated, we'll do some deliberation, and then we'll ask you to come back up for a rebuttal, should you want to. Commissioner Stein, do you have any questions? The applicant?
Yes, thank you. So Decker is not operating as a restaurant at the moment?
Not at the moment, no.
When will they plan to reopen?
At this time, we actually plan on dissolving that contract and parting ways. So Decker Kitchen will, I believe, move on to a different space. We would either seek a new tenant, or we, our other port, the other properties in our portfolio, we actually manage the F and B and the golf, and all the other amenities.
Well, if Decker's still not open, but then the country club can still sell the beer and wine to, what you're hoping for is to get the 41, where you can then sell it to the public after, and then are, what are those hours going to be? Because Decker's, I didn't realize, but they operate from just 11 to 5. So will the hours be changing then?
Correct, yeah. Historically, the 51 license that they were operating on was actually to Lake Linderoe Homeowners Association. So in theory, that's what this license would be going to. They would be the sole owners, because our company, Western Golf Properties, were only under contract, right? So that contract could be dissolved, you know, at the end of their time, or renewed. Therefore, the license stays with the owner of the property. Same thing with Decker Kitchen, who's a tenant, was a tenant of ours. So in theory, it should go under Lake Linderoe Homeowners Association. The hours of operation have always been from sunrise to sunset, where the golfers could purchase, you know, a canned beer, no draft. But, you know, the other part with Decker Kitchen originally was the contracted hours were to mirror the golf. So he originally was supposed to be open from 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. That was where a lot of the conflict in the contract and where the dissolve came from.
Oh, who has access to the pool and cabana now? Is it members only, or public?
Public and HOA.
Oh, okay. So anybody who's at the pool, you're, could buy a bottle of beer or a glass of wine right now, from sunrise to sunset?
Yeah. All, if we had, if we were selling right now, they would be buying it from the clubhouse. Then when they get to the gate, we buzz them in through our camera and our automated system. So they can't just walk in and out, when five years ago, when we got there, that was an open gate. We've kind of confined a lot of those areas and helped make it so it's not just a free-for-all. But there is no waiters or servers walk in the pool deck or the driving range. It is sold out of one, one space.
And that would be also open on Mondays, because it says right now Tuesday through Sunday, so.
Yeah. Decker originally was supposed to be seven days a week, and then he made it to Tuesday through Sunday, which then after that, the hours continued to fluctuate even more so. But the property itself, the only day it is closed is on December 25th.
How I was reading this before is I was thinking, okay, you're applying for Decker to sell beer and wine, alcohol eventually, but technically, right now, it is from sunrise to sunset that you're selling, and you're hoping to get the, okay.
If the, yeah, if the license was to mirror the ownership of the property, where when we started this process, Decker Kitchen was operating at that time. So a lot of the language in there was with him. We were hoping, at least the HOA homeowners, were hoping to work something out, because the contract is supposed to expire in April. In theory, if they could work something out between the two parties, maybe they can finish that time, but it doesn't look as that right now.
I'll defer any other questions before Commissioner Stein.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Stein. Commissioner Plaizer, do you have any questions?
Okay. Your hours are between 11 and 5. So you could serve up to 5 o'clock when the place closes? Or do you have a cutoff?
Yeah. For us, before Decker Kitchen was doing it, and we were operating the F and, the food and beverage, we were selling from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Because our property, for us, we'd stop driving range operations at 7:00.
So if someone purchases something at 5:00, and they then get into a car and drive, I mean, who is responsible?
I would, for us, we have our ABC training, so all the, all the, anyone who's selling the beverage is trained to understand who's intoxicated, over-served, or in where to cut that off. At the same time, whether they bought something at 7-Eleven or the hills across the street, we wouldn't know, but they are trained to read the person trying to purchase the alcohol.
So you would cut off someone who is definitely intoxicated?
Hundred percent.
Thank you, Commissioner Plaizer. Vice Chair Reinhardt, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Well, it's nice to hear that you, you've, you've updated the gates since I went there when I was a child and had a, there was a rinky-dink key, and you had to wiggle it in order to get the gate open for the pool, so.
Yeah. No, it's, we've, over our time with the property, we've tried to really put a lot more structure in there than what we inherited. You know, from the gates being locked on all sides, so it's one way in, one way out, where it used to be multiple points of entry. So the pool has definitely been a lot more secure.
And, and thank you for the clarity regarding Decker Kitchen, and I think that, that's where my line of questioning went, was understanding, you know, historically, that the property is owned by the Lake Linderoe HOA, which I am not a member of, and understanding, I guess, the chain of custody, I guess, as far as the events, you know, all of the spaces, and what the intention would be.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think, you know, something that, as, you know, we, you know, community, we'd want to understand, is making sure that, that the public's being served in a responsible way. And it sounds like what you're asking for is just basically to make sure that the license is, you know, relevant and up-to-date, you know, in regards to, from a compliance perspective. So when you said sunrise to sunset, I, I immediately went to, well, sometimes the sun rises before 6:00 a.m. So in the, so my, I guess my question, and I don't know if this is, this is not necessarily a question for the applicant, but that, you do not, you, you would not, as a policy, or historically as a policy, you have not served alcohol before 6:00 a.m., which would be the normal alcohol cutoff time, or, or start time?
Correct. Yeah. We, we don't, because of the homeowners and what they, how they've always operated the property, the first tee time would never be before 7:08. So therefore, we don't open the shop until 7:00.
Okay. Okay. And so with the partnership with Decker Kitchen dissolving right now, then you would, you would be seeking a license that would allow you to either operate your F and B as the, you know, property management company? Or if you saw fit, you know, through the wishes of the HOA, be able to bring in a tenant that could also operate within the parameters that's set up?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Or if it needed where, you know, one, only one operator can operate with, on the license, and that's kind of how we were doing it with Decker. We with, we withstood all of our alcohol sales. We actually transferred all the inventory over to Decker. And the only thing that our shop then sent, sold at, at that time was Gatorade and water, just from a liability standpoint during the summer. And that's how we would transfer back to.
Okay. If you, if you decided to.
Correct. Yeah.
Your current plan is to operate all F and B and alcohol sales in-house through your management company?
At this time, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. I have a few questions. I think the hours of operation are pretty clear to me.
Mm-hmm.
So then, I think gathering, you've expressed, or the HOA has expressed interest in amending. I know you're the sole representative tonight, but understanding that the contract, the license will remain with the HOA.
Yes.
Can you give us some indication as to what their thinking is? A concern of mine is, you know, if we, understanding now kind of the dynamics of the contract you currently have, come April, if I were a potential, you know, applicant for a contract with you all, and I saw Tuesday through Sunday at a golf course from 11 to 5, I probably wouldn't even apply.
Hundred percent.
Right? And so I think there's a business limitation there that I think we should consider, especially when we've heard that there's been no complaints from the Sheriff's Department in the past, and you all have essentially been operating with the type 47. So curious to hear what kind of like the, the framework of, of the thinking is around, from the HOA, understanding that you all might not be their management partner for, you know, perpetuity.
Yeah. But for us, I mean, we, we believe right now, we have a good partnership going on over the five years. When we got there, the busiest day for them was 16, 16 rounds of golf. And now, as of just last month, we average 123. So over our time with the five years that we've had the property, that's been successful, it's been a successful partnership between the two. So we foresee us continuing that long-term. As far as the hours of operation that were presented, that was strictly based on what Decker Kitchen was operating at that time, and forecasting not changing that, based on his needs and how he wanted to operate. We would hope if, you know, a new tenant came in, it would be Monday through Sunday, you know, with a, at least an eight-hour, nine-hour operation, to serve, you know, maybe not breakfast during the week, but, you know, 10:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m. till, you know, at least 7:00. And then Friday through Sunday, I would, I would presume, you know, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00, or 8:00 a.m. to 7:00.
Great. Thank you very much. The contract that you all have as the management company, what is the term of that?
Right now, it's a 12-month contract, and we renew every January. When we present, in December, we present the budget to them, they approve, and then we renew.
Okay. And the reason for my asking of that is because obviously the license will be held by the HOA.
Yeah.
But management, it seems like, based off of what you've said, has done a pretty good job of, of cleaning up operations, improving the business, improving the security around the pool. And it all seems like in very good faith, so I really appreciate that. But just, just want to understand that. I think for the most part, that concludes my questions. Any last questions for the applicant before we ask him to sit? Commissioner Plaizer?
Yeah. I'm a little confused. It says 11 to 5 now, but then you're saying, well, 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock. What does that mean?
Yes.
You change it with time, or?
Well, initially, when we started this application process, Decker Kitchen was in operation, and those were his hours. With him operating the alcohol and F and B, we had to apply with what he was operating as, foreseeing that he would continue that within his contract. Since the application process started, that, that relationship has dissolved, because we, at one point, we even had to stop alcohol operations, which hindered his operation, because all he could do is be the food L C at that point, until we understood what our license would be.
So you would stick with those hours, or would change with time?
Yeah. We would change those times, because those times were Decker Kitchen's.
So Commissioner Plaizer, if I may, I think their request is, not necessarily, I haven't heard it as a direct request, but as I understand, that we could consider an amending language to allow for use, or the sale of liquor, well, it would be the first license of the beer or wine, expanded past those hours, which would have to be an amendment that we would discuss. So we can, we can, I think, table that, we can discuss that during deliberation, so we can further clarify with staff. Is there any other questions for the applicant? Great. Thank you very much. You may now be seated.
Thank you.
I will now defer to our city clerk if there are any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the Planning Commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Do we have any public comments?
We did not receive any public comments.
Great. So technically, where'd you, where'd you end up? Oh, I think he's back there. I didn't catch his name. I think you catch his name? You technically have five minutes to rebut from the public comments. You can hold that. We might call you back up, which might be a little out of order, but considering you have no rebuttal, we're going to move on. So before I close the public hearing, do any commissioners have any further questions of the applicant and staff? Commissioner Stein?
I do have a question of the staff. So I'm reading the findings, and a lot of the findings are all based on Decker's operation and serving alcohol from 11 to 5, Tuesday through Sundays. Now hearing the applicant, Decker is closed, they're looking for a new restaurant. Hours of operation are going to probably be extended, and probably even want to be able to serve beer and wine earlier and later. Do we have to make an amendment to your, the findings before we then approve the findings? And what would that look like?
Yes. What I would actually recommend is continuing the item until the next Planning Commission meeting. Yes, what I would actually recommend is continuing the item until the next planning commission meeting, because it seems like we may have to just chat with the HOA after this meeting, slightly adjust the findings, and just make sure we're getting the applicant exactly what they want.
That was what I was hoping. Okay, thank you.
Let me chime in here. As a part of the process, Travis, sorry, our city attorney, can, can we continue the item right now, so we can move on? Because we have a heavy agenda, well knowing that with the intent of what the applicant discussed, and I think what we've discussed, we can, I can create a motion to, to continue the item under those conditions, and then?
So my recommendation would be to, to leave the public hearing open and continue it until the next meeting in, in two weeks, just so that we, we're not re-noticing the public hearing. And then you, you can ask further questions, and the public can, can provide input at that point as well.
In that continuation, I can, I can, sorry, this is my first time doing this, so I can literally do that right now, and we can move on to the next item?
So the public hearing is now open, you would just continue this item to, to the following meeting?
Okay, do I have to ask for a roll call vote? Yes, okay. Let's, let Vice Chair Reinhardt ask a question.
So, so we cannot amend the hours on the application right now? So we would have to, we would have to leave the item open and continue that until the next meeting in two weeks? And then we could amend them and vote on that then?
That's correct. There's some language in the findings that actually relies on, on the hours not changing. So it's a little bit more difficult than just swapping the hours and the conditions of approval after we reviewed the, the findings.
Okay, and, and just to clarify, when the process started, those hours were specifically put in there just because that's who was operating under, under the license and under those hours?
That's correct. That's what, so they actually submitted an application requesting those hours, so that's why those hours were in there.
Thank you.
I'll jump back in here then. Is there a pathway then in which we can approve tonight? Sorry, if hypothetically all four of us find, find, you know, meet with the findings that the city staff have prepared, can we do that with the condition that if the applicant does want to adjust, they can come back? And is there a streamlined process for that? Like, how can we? I just want to make sure, because obviously they, I think they're running up against a clock that's unfavorable to them. So I want to be mindful to that, but I also don't want to run the risk of opening the findings back up, the findings not being met, and then we're back here in two weeks deliberating on this exact language.
Because it sounds like the change in the hours might kind of sort of trickle through some of the findings. I think it would be safer for us to reexamine the hours and then make sure that, that the findings kind of match up with that, so that, that next time you have kind of the complete set of findings before you to, to make your decisions on, rather than us kind of going through tonight and approving something, and then, you know, we figure out later on it doesn't exactly match. I think it'd be safer to just all have it in front of you in an edited form.
And last question, would it be appropriate for me to ask the applicant to come back up and, and kind of just give us a verbal nod that that's desirable to continue the item, so that we can kind of meet somewhere in the middle ground on operations?
Yeah, the public hearing is, is open.
Thanks for bearing with us. We're not used to such a crowd, so. Anyways, as you can understand imaginably, right, we, I think we want to get this right. And so if, if it's okay with you, I think the recommendation from us tonight is going to continue this, so that staff can recognize, you know, what hours of operations might be more beneficial to you all, and then inform us as commissioners on what findings and how they meet, or don't meet the city's, you know, ordinances. There is, I would say admittedly, there's a little bit of a risk here, but I think the ultimate outcome will be more beneficial, so. It, it seems okay with you?
Yeah, for sure. We just want to make it right, so that's what we, you know, that process started for us, and same thing now, so we're good with that. Because I, we don't want to be locked into the 11:00 to 5:00 if it ends up being another tenant, right? So that's where for us, it needs to be, you know, a transferable, you know, because the HOA by law is allowed to only light, sign contracts up to a two-year. So whatever term they get with the next tenant to operate that space, it would be a two-year contract. So, you know, 11:00 to 5:00 to lock it into this license would hinder their operation for success.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think with that, I'm going to move to continue the item until our next planning commission. If staff is able to present a report by then, and if not, it will be, I think, the immediate following. So appreciate your attendance tonight. We look forward to working with you and seeing you again in the future, and for now, we're going to continue the item.
Thanks, guys.
Travis, any?
And just to clarify, so we're continuing the item, and the public hearing remains open until the next meeting?
Thank you, that's correct. And so I will now refer to our city clerk to a roll call vote.
We do need a second.
Oh, great, sorry. I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Vice Chair Reinhardt, seconds.
Great, thank you. Now I'll defer to our city clerk.
Thank you. Commissioner Plaizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval, four to zero.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for being here with us tonight. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider an adoption, sorry, consider the adoption of a resolution approving Agora Village Development Permit Case AVDP 2023-005 to permit outdoor dining areas in the Wizzen marketplace. I will now open the public hearing in the panel, and defer to our city associate planner, Katrina Garcia, for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Roth, and good evening, planning commissioners. As mentioned, tonight's item is for outdoor dining, uh, new outdoor dining areas and proposed valet at the Wizzen Market. So tonight I'll cover the following topics. I'll cover a brief background on outdoor dining regulations and the project scope. I'll go into a little more detail about the proposed outdoor dining. I'll break down the shopping center's parking capacity, and then the proposed valet, and lastly, staff's recommendation. So in 2023, the city adopted ordinance number 23470, which amended the city's outdoor dining regulations. Originally, businesses were allowed to place dining tables outside if there were only three tables or less, without any permit or approval from the city. During COVID, more, more businesses set up outdoor dining tables under this regulation and under the temporary outdoor operations permit, which was specifically set up during COVID. Eventually, the temporary permit was discontinued, and property owners and businesses were expected to apply for a permanent outdoor dining permit if they wanted to continue their outdoor use. Under the new ordinance, business, businesses wanting less than four tables would be able to do so with a zoning clearance. They wanted four or more tables, then they'd be subject to an outdoor dining permit. Property owners of several shopping centers were informed that each individual tenant could apply on a first-come, first-served basis, but the issue of allowing each tenant to apply could impact other businesses who also wanted outdoor dining and couldn't meet the required parking. Because of this, property owners were encouraged to apply for a comprehensive outdoor dining permit, so that staff could analyze the entire site and verify that the parking and plumbing fixtures were being met for the entire shopping center. In response, the city received one application for Wizzen Market's outdoor dining, which designates, designates the location and size of each requested outdoor area. This allowed the property owner to complete a full parking analysis based on the demand of the new uses. As a result, the property owner is also requesting to make an existing temporary valet service a permanent service on the site. The Wizzen Market is located south of the Ventura Freeway and is within the Agora Village specific plan. It's composed of several buildings with uses ranging from an event space, which is the Canyon Club, several restaurants, service uses such as salons and massage establishments, various retail stores and offices. On the far east of the site is the DIY building, which is not technically part of the Wizzen Market, but was included in staff's analysis because of the location of the proposed valet area. The slide shows a list of the businesses and restaurants that are included in this outdoor dining request. You have Plata, Blue Table, Sun Rose, Basta, Tudo's, Tifa, Carrara's Pastries, and Albatros Surfboards. And then I'll go into further detail about each tenant's request in the upcoming slides. I'd also like to mention that this permit does not include approval of any alcohol service, so each tenant would be responsible for applying for their own conditional use permit to serve alcohol within their new outdoor dining area. This is a site plan of the Wizzen Shopping Center. You know, it's a little hard to read, but we have Tifa on the northern part of the property along roadside drive with Albatros Surfboards and Tudo's. And then you have a Sun Rose, Plata, Carrara's, and Blue Table, which is on the building along Cornell Road, and they all are within the market hall. And then we have Basta on the southern side of the building along Agora Road. So in addition to each tenant's request for outdoor dining, the property owner also proposes to complete minor site improvements, primarily to accommodate Plata's outdoor dining area, which will include new landscaping and an expanded curb with decomposed granite, which is adjacent to the drive aisle. This slide shows renderings of the site improvements, along with Plata's new outdoor dining area, which will feature a new wooden trellis attached to the building and planter boxes that delineate their dining area. Since the expansion of the curb reduces the drive aisle and emergency access, the fire department also reviewed the project and found it acceptable, since it didn't reduce the drive aisle to less than 26 feet. So the first, or the second one is Blue Table, which is actually directly across from Plata in the market hall, is proposing outdoor dining both under the existing roof overhang and in the market hall. Because of the size of the proposed dining area, it triggered additional plumbing fixtures. So the tenant is also proposing to remodel the restaurant to accommodate two new restrooms. Sun Rose proposes to add 549 square feet of new outdoor dining in the market hall and immediately outside here in the far left corner, adjacent to the Cornell Road parking lot. Basta, which is located closest to the flood channel and the existing construction site for the Lady Face Greenway, is proposing a new wooden trellis above the new 592 square foot dining area, and will feature planter boxes and a gate to delineate the space, and also as required by the alcoholic beverage control department. Tudo's is located in the building along Cornell Road, and they're proposing 598 square feet of new outdoor dining space, which is situated between two buildings. The existing space is currently a walkway and an elevated landscape planter. The tenant proposes to remove the planter and resurface it to accommodate for the dining area. Tifa is a gelato and snack shop located in the building along Cornell Road, but faces the interior of the Wizzen Market area. They're proposing small bistro-style tables just outside of the tenant's space. And Carrara's Pastries, pastry shop located within the market hall and is proposing dining just outside of their storefrontage. It's relatively smaller compared to the rest of the, the requests at 50 square feet. Their tables would be located outside of the shop, but here it's in, within the market hall. And the last tenant, called Albatros Surfboards, is the newest tenant in the Wizzen Market requesting for outdoor dining space. Although their primary service is to sell surfboards and equipment, they also propose to sell coffee and prepackaged foods. Their proposed outdoor dining area is located just outside of the tenant's space between the two buildings, and is also near the Tudo's outdoor dining area. So as part of the analysis, we looked at the required parking for the new uses in conjunction with the existing tenants and the existing parking. Wizzen Market currently provides 500 spaces, not including the parking at the DIY site. The existing uses require 527 parking spaces, and takes into account the reduction the code allows for the highest individual use, which is the Canyon Club. Based on the city's parking requirements, the new outdoor uses would require 26 parking spaces, resulting in a capacity requirement of 553 spaces. As a result, the site is deficient by 53. However, the code allows the city to reduce the required parking if the applicant provides a parking analysis demonstrating the demand. The demand focuses more so on the business type and the peak hours of operation. For the Wizzen, the parking analysis indicated that the peak demand was highest on Saturday at 7:00 PM, with an active event occurring at the Canyon Club. The survey noted that 490 parking spaces of the 500 were occupied. Even though the peak demand didn't exceed the capacity, the property owner is also requesting to make the temporary valet service a permanent option. So currently, the shopping center is operating the valet under a T U P or a temporary use permit. This request would make the valet permanent with a daily service from 3:30 PM to 12:30 AM. The valet would continue the staging area in the same location within the central parking, near the Canyon Club and near Blue Table. And the actual valet parking would be located on the far southeast corner, near the flood control channel and behind the DIY building. Valet attendants would also follow a circulation path from the staging area to the valet parking area shown in orange, and from the valet parking area to the staging area shown in blue. The fire department also reviewed the proposed valet parking area and circulation, and they've accepted the proposal. The valet staging area will be sectioned off with portable signs and reflective stanchions, as seen in the photo on the left. And the valet operator, valet attendants will be located under the existing roof overhang and identifiable with a podium and umbrella seen on the right. The current parking area has, is currently paved and will not be striped, since it'll only be accessed by the valet attendants. The project is conditioned to add additional plantings on the south side, closest to the right-of-way, in order to fully screen the parking area. Staff has also conditioned the project to remove and store all portable valet signage and equipment when the service is not operating. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve Agora Village Development Permit Case Number AVDP-2023-005, including an outdoor dining permit to establish outdoor dining areas and valet service for multiple restaurants and shops at the Wizzen Market Square, and make a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings of the attached draft resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Stein?
Very rarely do I ever can say that I have probably visited every establishment that's requesting. I enjoy all the food, so, you know, I'm definitely, you know, in favor of that. A couple of the questions that I do have, first of all, is every applicant that, or use, they're going to have to apply separately for an outdoor CUP license? And will they be then coming back to the planning commission for that to be approved?
So they would only need to apply for the, the alcohol service within their new outdoor dining area. This application would be approving the additional outdoor space, but the service of the alcohol would be separate and would be completed by each tenant?
And then the wine bar at the far end is not included in this application? Are they going to apply separately for something? Because they have outdoor seating as well.
So if you're referring to Agora Wine and Beer, I believe they already have an approved outdoor dining permit before this application was submitted.
Okay, that helps answer that. And the other concern I just have is, you know, you're talking about putting in seats in between that pedestrian corridor. How are they going to control? I mean, I go there, and I know that a lot of the tables, people are having to walk around the seating. Are there going to be changes in terms of how pedestrians are going to be able to maneuver from space to space? And also my other, and then I'll, my next question will come after that.
Okay, so that'll probably be part of the building permit when the applicant does submit for a plan check. But I can also defer that to the applicant who's here, and they can tell you how they will manage the accessibility.
Okay, I'll defer my questions then to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Stein. Commissioner Plaizer?
Does any of the outdoor expansions impinge on the parking spaces that exist now?
No, they do not.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Thank you. Thank you for the thorough presentation, Katrina, I really appreciate it. So I guess, expanding a little bit on Commissioner Stein's question regarding, you know, traffic management for the outdoor dining spaces. Some of the, some of the restaurants have, I guess, greater definitions of what their outdoor space is, you know, with enclosures, which, you know, I know helps with compliance with the, you know, alcohol permit, et cetera. But for businesses like Tudo's or Albatros, would it be, you're saying that you would have to, I guess, put something in the permit when, when they submit the final plans, just defining the space? Or help, help me understand that a little bit more?
So they would technically have to maintain at least four feet of pedestrian pathway typically, whether or not they have a building permit. For Tudo's, because they are proposing to do physical changes to the site, they will need a building permit. And so that will be verified dur- need a building permit, and so that will be verified during plan check with the building division.
Okay, but that doesn't necessarily need to come before us if we, again, if we approve kind of this all-encompassing plan for Wizzens?
Correct. It wouldn't need to come back to you.
Okay, great. And the other, I just wanted to understand kind of the right-of-way, I guess, with the space, and if it was like, you know, did it have to be roped off? Or were there certain things that had to occur? Because it seems like we're Albatros's and we're Tudo's', that there'd be, I guess, a little bit of overlap with usable space, but that, again, I want to make sure that everyone had fair use of that, but also that there was appropriate right-of-way.
So I'll defer that to the applicant, but as far as I know, Albatros will not be serving alcohol, so they wouldn't need to delineate their space. Tudo's, they are planning to serve alcohol in their new outdoor dining area, so they will have a railing to separate and cordon them off.
Okay, great. And then regarding the valet, so even, so the space that DIY is part of is not necessarily considered part of Wizzens, even though it's, so it's not owned by the same property owners?
It is owned by the same property owner. We didn't consider it as part of the parking analysis for the Wizzen, but there is a shared parking agreement, so people from Wizzen can use the parking at the DIY center. But for the purpose of showing like the deficiency in the Wizzen Market, we didn't include that as part of the count. But they do have the ability to use that parking after certain hours.
I see. Okay. So I think one of my concerns was, I wanted to make sure that with the valet service and with there being increased usable square footage from a business perspective and looking at your equation for parking spaces, I think the nightmare that we want to avoid is having a bunch of cars pile up on Agora Road or there being, you know, I guess, parking nuisances in the surrounding areas, you know, in businesses, because I know that there's a lot of congestion and how, and how that could be affected also with like, you know, the new building that's going up where the other shopping center used to be and everything like that. So right now, that parking agreement and the valet agreement, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any sort of like easy breakability on that, right? Where it would make, it would make sense that if it's all owned by the same people and they're operating this valet license, that there's, there's going to be plenty of parking space available. It's just defined in a different spot than it would be now. And to echo on Commissioner Platzer's question, there are no spaces going away as a result of these projects.
I'll defer that to the applicant.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair Roth, I've got a few questions. I'm a parent, so I've actually been to all of these establishments, and I've taken my children to the bathroom at all of these establishments. Curious why Blue Table is required to increase their bathroom volume, yet Tudo's, that is significantly expanding their outdoor footprint, doesn't have to expand their bathroom. And I don't believe they actually have a bathroom inside. I believe that the bathroom is the shared bathroom. And so I'm curious, because, like I said, I've been all the bathrooms there with my children. By Blue Table, I know there's the restrooms upstairs, and so I'm curious why that is imposed upon them and not Tudo's, and if that's a concern of staff.
So the full analysis hasn't been completed yet. That would be completed during the building permit with the building division. But as far as what the applicant has submitted, they did preliminary calculations with the types, with the type of use and the standard ratio of how many plumbing fixtures to provide. And it was determined that because Blue Table is operating within its, within itself, the existing plumbing fixture that's there on top of the additional outdoor dining requires another plumbing fixture. Whereas Tudo's, there are additional restrooms, more restrooms provided beyond their tenant space, even though it is shared. So there are actual plumbing fixtures, calculations for Tudo's on top of the other tenants that are sharing it. And I can also defer that to the applicant who's here tonight.
Yeah, because to me, that actually doesn't add up, because again, Blue Table, like I said, also operates in the shared space in the center of that, I forget what it's noted as. And there's restrooms upstairs, there's elevator access. So from an accessibility perspective, I don't understand how that wouldn't apply to their kind of, the ratio and allotment that's required of them and vice versa with Tudo's, which doesn't have any interior restrooms public, available to the public. There's only the one outside in the shared use area with Plata, or sorry, not Plata, Tifa, the surfboard shop, the salon, which might have their own. But anyways, you get what I'm saying. Like, I'm confused as to why there's a differentiation between the two.
Right. And we can defer that to the applicant, who can probably explain it better than I can.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want to be overly onerous to one tenant and not the other, you know, I just want to make sure we get the calculation right for our businesses here. Second question related, or not related, but my children have not had margaritas at Plata. That being said, I know that they serve margaritas out on the current outdoor use. It sounds like they will have to cease those operations until they come back before us for a new ABC license, kind of running a through point from the last item. Can staff clarify what that will look like? I know Basta also has alcohol. It sounds like the wine and beer shop at the end of the property is already accounted for, but I'm curious to know what that's going to look like. I don't know what Sun Rose is proposing, but to me, that seems like something that we should probably address in the near term, given that those are their current operations and what they, you know, do very successfully.
Yeah, so as we said during the last presentation as well, ABC is actually the enforcement authority, so unless we received a complaint, we wouldn't go out to inspect something like that, because we're operating on a complaint basis as well. But strictly speaking, those restaurants would be able to serve alcohol within their current parameters where their ABC license allows them to sell alcohol, and they would be able to do everything but the alcohol in the outdoor dining.
Can you help educate us as to why they currently, like, if ABC is the ultimate, you know, compliance and authority around this from a regulatory perspective, like, why does our city's outdoor dining provision have anything to do with in what they bring from? I'm just curious. Where does the ABC license interplay there?
So ABC holds the actual ability within the state of California to grant an alcohol license, and then within the state code, it allows certain provisions that allow local agencies to still have some land use control over alcohol usage. And so for certain alcohol types, we are able to require a conditional use permit. And so for us, the conditional use permit runs kind of parallel to the ABC license. So they would need to have both the ABC license parameters to operate within very specific areas, and then also the land use authority comes from us.
With that in mind, is there, without having this go haywire like the last item, is there anything that we could add to future-proof the ability for these applicants to make it as streamlined as possible, so we can create an additional condition that allows for them to circumvent a planning commission process should they pursue expansion of their licenses out to the, to the outdoor use areas?
Yes and no. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be fast, is what I, what I would say. There is an option to do a center-wide conditional use permit for alcohol, but I would say that's not something that we could decide tonight.
Okay. And again, to be clear, I'm suggesting, right, like, I want to make, I mean, these are all outstanding businesses in our community. I think the Wizzens is, you know, kind of like the center of our town, even though it's not the technical center, right? And these are all businesses that all of us, I know everyone in this room, frequents. And so as minimal friction to, to the applicants and the tenants, I think is ideal here, but we also want to get it right. So I just want to make sure of, like, if there's a pathway in which we can amend tonight's proposals, so we can make it streamlined for them in the future, should they decide to go for those applications, I think that, we should consider that.
Yeah, so since tonight doesn't have anything to do with alcohol, which is a separate conditional use permit, there, I don't think we could put anything within the conditions for the development permit to streamline a conditional use permit for future, for a future alcohol license.
That being said, though, if the applicant decides to come with all the tenants under one umbrella CUP, that's something that the planning commission consider, could consider at a future date.
Definitely possible.
Okay, great. Thank you. That concludes my questions. Are there any further questions from commissioners? Commissioner Stein?
Yeah, I just want to be clear, you know, part of the findings that we have to make is with the increased square footage for the outdoor dining, it's going to increase parking. Part of the, they're solving it is having proper valet service. I've been there before. Sometimes I just drive into the parking lot. It's so full, I just leave. I mean, that's just the nature of the business. So I just want to make sure that, you know, my findings, you know, just because I leave, because I don't find parking adequate, doesn't mean that I can't make the findings. But I just want to be, make sure that I understand that, because a lot of times, there's, people are just parking sort of in between the aisles, waiting for a car to move, pedestrians are coming. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're just clearly all aware, you know, the potential, you know, complications of, you know, just expanding it. But I do appreciate the fact, I did not know there was, I thought there would be, but a shared parking agreement with DIY, which does help a lot, and I see a lot of people parking there at night, which does alleviate a lot of the traffic, especially when the Canyon Club's got a big, that's a...
Yeah, can you restate your question?
One of the findings we have to make is that there's going to be sufficient parking on the lot, and a lot of it's going to be because of the valet. So I just want to make sure that, because, you know, just that the vehicle or traffic going down the aisles and all that, you know, just recognize that that is an issue, and that, but I can still make finding. I just want to make sure I'm clear that of what my responsibility is.
Yeah, absolutely. So in all of the findings, it's based on a set of land use criteria. Some of those criteria are based on objective health and safety, traffic circulation, and things of that manner. City staff has reviewed their proposed plan and the road width and all the access and circulation, and we've found that we've obviously recommended that, to make all the findings. So that would just be incumbent upon the planning commission to also come to those same findings.
Thank, thank you. I just want to be that clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Platzer?
I don't see any handicap parking in this proposal here.
They're not proposing to restripe any parking, but there is existing accessible parking on the site.
So how much handicap parking is there now?
We didn't do that calculation since they, since they weren't altering the existing parking, but we can defer that to the applicant.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt, any further questions?
No, I don't have any additional questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? I think I can attest for all of us, we've all been there thousands of times probably collectively. So I will now defer to our applicant. You or your representatives will have a total of 15 minutes for your presentation. Please adjust the microphone and watch for the red light on the podium. You may now come up. When you see the yellow light, you have one minute to wrap up your comments. Thank you very much.
Chair Roth, excuse me if I may. It appears our light is not working, so I will go ahead and let the applicant know when there's about two or three minutes left. And if you could please introduce yourself when you come up to the podium.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Bill Tucker. I'm one of the owners of the project, Wizzen Market Square. I've also brought up Corey Antilla. He's our architect, and he knows a lot of the technical, technical answers that you've been asking. I'm not going to need all two minutes, because I think, staff, you've done a great job in presenting it. Ms. Garcia has been great working on the project for the whole time, and Mr. Zovek has also been very involved in the project, so they know that. I'm not going to use up, and I want to respect your time as well. But any questions, we're here to answer them, and I know you had some, so fire away.
Can you just double-check to make sure that's the order of operations? That is. So we will eventually move to public comments. You'll have the opportunity, as was before, for rebuttal, but yes, I will now defer to Commissioner Stein if he has any questions with the applicant.
No, I just want to thank Bill. You know, you did a great job with everything, and I, you know, I visit it all the time, so.
Thank you.
Just thank you.
We'd like, thanks very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Stein. Commissioner Platzer, do you have any questions?
I agree, Wizzen's has, has been a major improvement, but my concern is parking. When I go there, I get very frustrated. I go around and around and around, and I go to DIY, or whatever it's called.
Sure.
And, and it's very frustrating.
Sure.
So the valet parking scares a lot of people, and it says paid by the patron, so it's going to be costly for the average person that attends the restaurant, going to be paying valet parking plus whatever the, you know, the menu, meals cost. How are you going to handle the valet parking?
Well, well, we've already installed it on a temporary basis, and it's been there for about, I don't know, two, three months? Three months or so?
More than that.
More than that, okay. But, and it's being used, and people, not everyone is going to use it, but we feel that it's going to free up more parking for people who don't want to use the valet by have, by having a small percentage of people use the valet, and the valet is not taking up any of our parking spaces. They're going in an area that used to be, if you remember, the baseball batting cage area. So it was, it's been an abandoned area, and it hasn't been utilized at all. We cleared it all out just for the valet, so now there are cars that are able to use the valet, not to get any, take up any parking. The operator's a very professional operator. They know, they have a path of travel, which we've laid out for them specifically, to minimize the, the impact of having cars pile up. And they're, they're sending those cars down to this area way off the premises, and it's actually freeing up parking, because we addressed that problem for your very reason. We felt that a lot of, a lot of patrons are coming to the center, and they were frustrated, and we figured this is a way to solve the problem. So we think it's helping, and we want to improve it. Once this is approved, we're going to spend a little more money and make the signage better, invest in, in, in things that'll make it more inviting for patrons to use.
Is there going to be increase in handicap parking?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Handicap parking.
We haven't addressed that at all. We do comply, we have had.
Yeah, we, sorry. Let me step in there. Yeah, the accessible parking, we've had a number of tenant improvements over the years. We've gone through plan check, we comply as an overall center with the number of parking, accessible parking. And then each, those accessible parking spaces are kind of distributed across the center based on proximity of specific tenants. So each time a tenant comes in, we have to demonstrate that those, that accessibility complies. So as a whole, as a whole center, overall parking, we comply, and then the distribution is adequate for, as each tenant comes in for a tenant improvement.
So for example, La Plata, how many handicap parking slots do they have? Or?
It's not specific to one tenant. Yeah, it's just based on the overall center.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question as well.
And for the record, would you state your name for our city clerk? Because I know...
Corey Antilla.
Great, thank you very much. Vice Chair Reinhardt, do you have any questions with the applicant?
Thank you. Thank you for, you know, working with the city, and I know, having visited several of the businesses over the years, and especially over, you know, the last year, hearing their desire to have outdoor space more accessible and putting together this, you know, kind of like, you know, all-encompassing project, I think is really exciting for the overall health of the area. And I think most of my questions have been answered as far as my concerns with parking and with traffic flow, but you did just, I guess, pique my interest a little bit on what your plans would be to spend money on signage, and I guess, to a larger extent, one of my concerns would be, I've gone over, you know, to the Canyon Club for, you know, several events, and I want to be cognizant of not having any light pollution as far as, you know, adding, you know, I know we're trying to reduce all of our lighting in the city to, you know, be more friendly to wildlife, but also there are some challenges with signage as far as being able to see, like, you know, the valet sign, or I guess, sort of like some of the rights of way in the, in the parking area when it, you know, when it's particularly dark. So do you have any thoughts on how you might address that from a, you know, both environmentally conscious standpoint? conscious standpoint and a user experience?
Sure. Well, one of the points, one of our problems we have with the valet area, where it is right now, is that people, a lot of people, I've been told, believe that it's just for the Canyon Club. And so, some people think, they drive in and they think, well, their Canyon's Club's got valet parking, and even though we've tried to put it on the signage right there, when you first, when you drive in the center from Agora Road, you don't necessarily know there is valet parking, and if you did find it, you think it might belong to the Canyon Club. So, those are the kinds of things we want to address to make sure people know that it's accessible to the, to all the patrons. And in order to do that, we want to put signage, we already have it on the, on, on the outdoor dining permit. You'll see, we have signs already indicated where we want them, so we want to make sure we put them there, and we do want to make them visible. We don't want to have lighting that's going to bother the night sky. We want to make sure it's lowly illuminated, just so that when drive in, they can see it, but they know where, directionally, where they go to get to, to the valet, because some people who may be coming from out of the area don't know the center, and they need to have some directions, how to get to the valet area. So, that's what we're going to work on, and make sure that it's, it's done in a reasonable way, and we want to be sensitive to the night sky issue, and, and make sure that people know that it's not just for the Canyon Club. But we think that's going to prove it.
Okay, great. And, and I do like that you're using existing space for the overflow with, with valet, and that you're not taking up any spaces with, with valet, because I know some other centers that have employed valet, you know, all of a sudden conveniently, there are no spaces available because they're all being taken up by, by valet.
Right. No, that's why we designated the area back by D I Y, so it's, it's not, it's not taking up the spaces that way.
Do you, future state, do you say, do you see that space being adequate for any increase in business or activity? And is the center currently, what's the occupancy rate of, of the center at present?
The occupancy rate of the center?
Of the center, right. So, for, for example, right, if, it seems like it's pretty high, just from my personal experience.
For the first time ever, as of about three weeks ago, we're 100% full.
Wow, congratulations.
Yeah, that is a big deal, yeah.
That's something that I thought of, was that if there was maybe, you know, a different tenant to go in that might potentially increase the car trips.
The, the only additional tenant that's coming in, they've signed the lease, so I say it's 100% full, FedEx is moving into the center, and that's from, so they, they are the only tenant that's not occupying it. Is there one other maybe small, oh, there is a small tenant, I think 1,000 square feet, that we're doing the, we're making a transition, they're going to be moving in along the market, Market Road South. So, that's, those are the only two tenants, I believe, that haven't occupied, although they've signed the leases.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you.
As mentioned, obviously, I think you can hear all of us, we love the site, and so we really appreciate you bringing it into the lines of the city's ordinance, et cetera. I'm going to ask about the bathroom, so probably best, I think, for you to answer. Again, curious, because, again, the way the staff report is laid out, it explicitly does mention right out the gate that, you know, Blue Table is required to increase. I've been to Tudo's so many times, like I said, with my kids, someone's in the bathroom outside, and it's a nightmare, so I'm just curious, like, I, I've navigated with that, it's like, fine, but I just want to make sure, I know the, the owner of Blue Table was here earlier, she's no longer here with us, but curious to know, like, is that a particularly onerous thing for her, and, or, sorry, Blue Table's owner was here, was that onerous for her? So, just kind of curious the dynamics there, and why it's not required of Tudo's.
Yeah, fair question.
I, I actually worked with Gina, the owner of Blue Table, and part of it was, she wants to redevelop her restaurant, and so it gave us an opportunity to look at adding another restroom.
Okay.
We have different levels inside the restaurant, so we have one restroom at a higher level for accessibility, so anybody that's in the upper portion of the restaurant versus the lower portion of the restaurant. So, we have two restrooms, just from accessibility. The second part of it, the question, we have the Market Hall as a whole, most of the tenants in there, other than the restaurants, don't have restrooms within their spaces, so the offices or the retail, but the restaurants all individually self-perform in terms of the California Plummy Code fixture counts. So, Plata, Sun Rose, and Tudo's, or not Tudo's, um, Blue Table, now all self-perform as a restaurant, based on their, based on the calculations and the function of space that the, the plumbing code would dictate.
Okay. But, on the opposite side, the shared bathrooms are shared by Albatross, Tifa, and Tudo's.
Yeah, for Tudo's, for, for, well, Albatross has their own restroom within their space.
Oh, they do, okay.
They just pull, they're, they're just pulling permits now to build. So, they're not, those, those, those two common restrooms were permitted for Tifa and for Numero Uno, who is the predecessor of Tudo's. So, they're just continuing that permit. They're, even with their increased seating, they still comply under the California Plummy Code.
Okay, that's sufficient, thank you very much. The only other question I had, just because, again, it was, you know, for instance, here for Tudo's, it's, mentions their liquor license, or Plata, it mentions the requirement for a potential new liquor license, right, since the restaurant will still, will be also required to apply. Curious, considering my questions to staff earlier, what your considerations are for the entire property to make it as easy as possible for your tenants, or if it's going to be an individual thing?
We're, we're open to that idea. It's a good idea, we've, we've talked about that, and in some configuration of that, we're open to it, and we're going to be exploring that.
Yeah.
Our first step was to get this approved, and then we'll, then we'll take a look at that.
Fantastic, yeah, because, as I mentioned, I'll discuss more at my, during deliberations, but I just want to make sure, right, these are existing establishments in our community, you know, we all dine and enjoy the, the entertainment at the, at the Canyon Club, so, you know, the continuation, I think of that.
Yeah, that might be separate, but, you know, well, yeah, but we're, we'll take a look at it. We have a, a liquor permit consultant that we're talking to, yeah.
Fantastic, I just wanted to make sure.
But it's a good, it's a good point, and, you know, we are exploring that.
Awesome. No further questions for me. I'm now going to defer to, rather, actually, fellow commissioners, any other questions? Otherwise, I will defer to our city clerk for public comments.
I'm not sure if I have a more question to staff or to the owner, but you're, the batting cage, you know, that's where you're now going to be having the valet parking.
Right.
Somebody came to you five years' future and say, I want to build a building there. Would you be able to build a building, or is this valet parking now going to restrict you from future development?
Well, we'd, we'd have to figure out a Plan B. We'd have to figure out what that would be. So, yeah, we could, we would not eliminate the valet parking without having some alternative way of handling it. But, I mean, that's not even, that's not happening right now, so, but it's something that we'd have to consider.
Because that's just the concern is, you know, five years later, all valet parking.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Plaizer, I see you're going up here.
Is the valet parking going to spill over on the streets?
No.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. I just actually want to plug a comment. Very nostalgic to hear about the batting cages, I went to a lot of birthday parties there growing up, and I totally forgot about them, so appreciate the nostalgia tonight. You, you may now be seated, we'll call you back up after the comments. I will now defer to our city clerk if we have any public comments. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Do we have any public comments?
Thank you. We did not receive any written correspondence. We do have two speakers this evening, Mark Hernandez, followed by Matt McGee, and because the light isn't working, we'll go ahead and set the timer at 30 seconds. I'll pause it and let you know you have 30 seconds, and I'll call time at the end of the 30.
Great, you may now approach the podium, if either of you are here.
Is Mark Hernandez here? Perfect.
Thank you for being with us.
Yeah. Mark Hernandez, Sun Rose California Eatery owner. I just want to thank you guys, this is going to be great for us. Like you guys commented, having a business in Agora is fantastic, and being able to have the outdoor dining is just key for us. So, I just want to say thanks.
Thank you very much. To our second public comment?
Matt McGee?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have listened to the plan, and I looked at the blueprint, and there's something that I think everybody has overlooked or is not yet addressed, and that is DoorDash drivers. DoorDash drivers and Uber Eats drivers use the Whizzen's parking lot, speaking as someone who dabbles in it. The moment that you come in that front, that first entrance, coming up to the Canyon Club, it's dog eat dog, especially around dinnertime, starting around 4:30 until about 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. It's very difficult to find a parking space. If what I'm seeing on that blueprint is correct, it looks like that's going to become congestion point A. And I'm okay with being wrong about that. But, those, those who are working for food delivery services, and almost every name that I saw on the list there, I've had an experience with using DoorDash, Blue Table, and on and on. It looks like there are going to be, there are going to be a number of people who aren't familiar with Whizzen's Center, or as familiar as I am, of where to go park your car and walk to where it is you got to go. They're going to come in there, see a valet sign, depending on how the valet is laid out, they're going to come in, see a valet sign, will they be able to duck to the left and go past where Tifa is, or do they, are they going to get funneled into where the valet signs are? They won't be familiar with the, with, with where the batting cage is used to be, and additional parking over D I Y. A lot of the drivers would rather drop a call than walk 100 feet to a restaurant, unfortunately. So, where are they going to be, where are they going to go? It sounds as though you have a concern, Ms. Reinhart, about traffic and congestion going out onto roadside, as would I. One of the questions I would want to ask right away is the valet service that we'll be contracting with, or the city will be contracting with, or Whizzen's will be contracting with, how many employees will they have? If they just have two, well, that means that the first guy picks up a car, drives it to where the batting cages used to be, and has to then walk following this, this particular route. And, of course, the shortest point between, you know, two points is, is a straight line, and he's going to want to do that straight line.
30 seconds.
30 seconds, thank you. Is how many, so how many people will the valet service be employing in order to move that line along, and what can we do about DoorDash and other food delivery? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no further speaker.
No further, thank you very much. Great, so I will now defer to our applicant. You have five minutes for rebuttal, and then after your rebuttal, before we close, commissioners will ask further questions of the applicant and of staff. Would you like to come up and rebut?
Yeah, we, we have, I'm going to address both of the questions that we just raised. As far as DoorDash is concerned, we have, I think it's eight parking spaces that are for loading and unloading of food. This is short-term parking, I think it's 15-minute only, and right in front of the Market Hall, I think there's two or three on the Cornell side, and between what is now lumber and linen and near Plata, there's a, a area there that is for loading and unloading for just quick up, quick pickup for, I shouldn't say loading and unloading, it's for pickup of food. And your gentleman has a good point, though, and it's something we haven't taken, we should probably reach out to DoorDash and have their drivers know exactly where those parking spaces are, but they won't be coming through, or we're not asking them to come through the main driveway. Those are the areas that are for the pickup. And as far as the other issue that you raised, as far as the number of employees, we have three employees always there for that very reason, so that somebody can stay, man the valet area, and another person could go get the car or bring them back, with the three people always on board at the site. And if, when it's on busy nights, we have more than three. We've had as many as five, so we try and address that as well.
Great.
But, but thank you for your question, good point.
Thank you very much. I will now defer to my fellow, let me see, double check here. Yeah, before I close the public hearing, I'm going to defer to our commissioners, if we have any further questions of the applicant and staff. Commissioner Stein?
Well, now, I'll address the staff regarding the valet parking area. How will that impact, you know, I'm always looking at the future, trying to figure out, this is a pad that could be developed, and then the city would have to, they'd apply for that, and then you'd have to reevaluate all the parking requirements for Whizzen Center again at that point, and then determine if there'd be sufficient parking, so we could address it at a future date, and not have to be concerned with it today?
Yes, so, when, if that site does ever get developed, we'll evaluate the application, and we will reevaluate the parking.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant or staff?
Just a comment, my concern has been the parking, and I hope it tightens up, and I appreciate what the guy said about DoorDash and handicapped, or people that want to just enjoy going to the restaurant. So, it needs to be worked out, so it's, you know, easy access and ingress and exit.
Sure, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Reinhart?
Thank you. Thank you for your, your comments, Mr. McGee, and thank you for your responses. One question that I think was raised with that, and I understand that there are loading and unloading spaces already identified at the market, I will, I guess, put, put forward this question, would you be open to increasing that number based on this new traffic? And also, would you be open to making sure that those are more clearly marked? Because my one critique is, as someone who goes over to Carrera quite a bit.
Sure.
And runs in and gets a quick coffee, those spots are not necessarily the easiest to identify, at least on that side of the, the plaza, so could you maybe speak to some ways that we could?
Yeah, I'm open to that, sure. It sounds like a good point in terms of, we want to make it easy for everyone, and we want to make it identifiable, so I'm certainly open to that, absolutely, yeah.
And then if you were, I know that each restaurant works individually with the delivery services. In fact, I, I had an interesting conversation the other night with a business owner in Westlake about why they don't do DoorDash or some of the other services, and that they, they take a stand and do not employ those services. But I know most restaurants, it's a reality that they, you know, that that's part of their survival at this point. So, with that said, if you were working directly with some of these delivery services, or if you're Restaurant Collective, I guess for lack of a better descriptor, having those spaces marked in the app, you know, would be helpful, but I think something that I'm, I'm not necessarily, I, that there's, that there's not like, an easy answer on this, but with those identifiers, right, I mean, you don't want to implicitly, like, endorse a, a specific delivery service like DoorDash, right?
Right.
There's 16 of them that are out there at the, at this point. So, has there been any discussion on how you might be able to, I guess, more clearly define, like, loading and unloading zones, or, or what some of those issues?
There hasn't been discussion on that. It's, it's a good point, though, but, and I didn't know there are 16 delivery services.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, but whatever there are, well, I will, we will, we will reach out to them personally, and we'll make a call to each of them that we can find, and educate them about that, so that if they can distribute to their drivers and let them know where they are, that'd be great, so, but we'll, we'll make, we'll make an effort to do that.
Okay, and then I guess just to clarify on the valet area, right, and, and the fact that you, you brought up earlier, that a lot of folks think that the, the valet is exclusively for the Canyon Club.
Right.
And, you know, we discussed that maybe better signage might identify that, but just to clarify, the way that when you come in from, like, where the driveway is past Wood Ranch, the main entrance off of roadside, you're, you're not funneled into a point of no return, right, as far as valet? There's, there's a clear, there's a clear delineation between the lane that's for valet parking and getting into the rest of the plaza, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. We don't want anyone to feel that they have to choose one or the other. They, it's, yeah, it's not a, it's not a funneling in at all, and they, they have the absolute choice which way they want to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, but thank you.
Great, thank you. You may, you see, I don't have any further questions. There being no further questions, am I seeing my fellow commissioners? Right, I will now close the public hearing, and we will now move on to deliberations. I will change up the order slightly. Commissioner Plaizer, would you like to begin our deliberations?
Right now, or what?
Right now, or what?
Well, I can make the findings to go along with this proposal.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Stein.
First of all, I wanna thank the owners of Wizzen Center. Not only do you provide a lot of services, but also you do so many for the community, you open up for the fairs and things like that. So I, first of all, I wanna commend, and I know Mark Conendis, Sun Rose was just acknowledged as Business Owner of the Year, so, I mean, you're doing something right there, so I really appreciate all that. My concern always has been, you know, providing good quality restaurants, food where we can do it dining in Agoura Hills, stay in Agoura Hills, not go out of Agoura Hills. And your center is one of the most dominant forces in that area, so I really like that. My concern always has been just the parking. I've gone there, we try to park, sometimes we just leave, go somewhere else, and I think that is just the nature of parking these days, is people just don't wanna deal with it, go somewhere else. You're addressing it with the valet service. I have observed it, and I think by addressing, yeah, because the first time I saw it, I thought it was for Canyon Club only, but now I realize there will be, and I do remember if you come off of, I think, the Agoura Road, there is a sign that it's valet for the entire center, so I think the better signage there will work. You know, but, you know, my biggest concern was just noise. The bathrooms, not my problem, but I can imagine with families it would be, so hopefully that will be addressed. But overall, I can make all the findings.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Stein. Vice Chair Reinhardt.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to, you know, just acknowledge everybody here and thank you, thank you for coming and participating in this process. You know, some folks might say that Planning Commission is not riveting, but I think we've had a very engaging evening and educational, and, and we have two more items, so, you know, there's, there's a long way to go. I hope everyone sticks around for the fun. I know I will. But I wanna thank the business owners and, and the property owner for, you know, coming together, working together collectively to come up with something that is appropriate for the community. And, and I think that that's something that really does differentiate us, is that staff does a really amazing job of, of putting together reports and working with the business owners to make sure that, that their needs are being met as well as the community as a whole. And I think that, you know, some of the public comments that we've received, you know, there, there are still a couple of outstanding issues that we can address, but if that's something that we can, you know, work on through the building permit process and through, you know, again, just making sure that we have an ideal user experience for everyone, and that it continues to thrive as a plaza. I mean, one of the good news things about you not being able to find a parking spot, you know, Commissioner Stein, is that's a great problem to have when there are a lot of communities that, you know, have centers that are dead and dying. So we would, we would love it if all of our centers had that issue. But I think that, you know, even with some of my parking concerns, the fact that it's a older center and that the, the parking space ratio has been lar, you know, has been larger than what is now the current model based on some of the reductions that have been made in the, the modern development, you know, resolutions, with the, with the new changes, I too can make all the findings.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Reinhardt. Yeah, I, I can't echo my fellow commissioner's sentiments enough about the longstanding presence that the Wizzen Center has had in our community. I think as you can gather, I have been there since, you know, I was a child, and I now take my children there, and it's a pretty phenomenal experience to, to be able to do. And so it's, it's definitely a special place to our community, so I really appreciate everything that you and the business owners and the tenants have, have placed and invested in our community. Cannot agree more that having, you know, a parking problem of sorts is, is a good problem to have, especially in light of what Vice Chair Reinhardt said with other businesses struggling. I can make all the findings, I'll say that in the outset. I, I really do appreciate hearing the commitments around both the signage and making sure that adequate flow of traffic, generally speaking, both for the valet and potentially for DoorDash, is something that is of consideration and concern of yours as well. To opine a little bit, I believe that there's a way that the restaurants can have instructions built into the application, and so when they're connected to a potential driver or someone who's picking up, I think that there's a way to instruct them in the app. I've worked for a few tech companies, so I think that's a thing. But, you know, so if that's, if that's where the communication begins and it ultimately ends at some additional signage, I think that's a win for everyone. I am less concerned about the parking and the flow of traffic, because, one, it does meet the state law, it meets our city's ordinances and requirements, and so I can make, make the findings there. But I'm also really excited about, we've invested a lot, we've received a lot of funding for our, our bike plan and our master bike plan. So increased circulation in non-vehicles, I think is gonna be ever-increasing, I mean, we see it every single day with kids, unfortunately, and I know there's probably gonna be changes in, in the legislature this year around that, and I know our community's been very, you know, hot on that when you go on, online, et cetera. But I think it does ultimately point to the idea that, you know, we are hopefully starting to trend toward people not using single, you know, vehicle use car trips. And so to me, that's less of a concern. You know, I, I look forward to the day to having more protected bike lanes in our city so I can ride more comfortably and feel more safe with my children out there. We're not there yet, but I know we're getting there, and so that's why I didn't opine about that, but to me, that's, I think, something we should consider. I really wanna appreciate the consideration around the alcohol, you know, obviously in light of the item before, I don't wanna get anyone in trouble. These are, you know, longstanding businesses that have done a phenomenal job in our community and I think are very staple now to us. And so I wanna make sure that is, you know, limited onerous kind of, you know, pressures on them to conform, et cetera, like we can just make it as, as good for them moving forward, so appreciate your considerations there. I can make all the findings, and, and with that, I will defer to a commissioner to move tonight's item.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve the...
Simplify, you can say item three of tonight's agenda, and I'll, I'll clarify, or Travis will clarify when we get there.
Yeah.
Sorry, if I may, you can just say I moved to approve staff recommendation, and that will include everything.
Yeah, to approve the Agoura Village development permit, including outdoor perm, dining permit and valet service.
Great, thank you, and if we have second?
Sorry, if I may interrupt, if you wanna just move to approve staff recommendation, I think that would be cleaner.
Commissioner Stein moves, makes a motion to move the, approve the staff recommendation.
Got it, thank you, everyone, we're a little rusty, it's been a while since we've had a big meeting, so.
Vice Chair Reinhardt, seconds.
Thank you very much. Would you like me to restate, or is it okay to just move to a roll call vote?
I think you're good to proceed.
Great, thank you. I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval for it as zero.
Great, thank you very much. We are now moving on to item number four. Sorry, let me double-check, actually. So, yeah, I apologize, I now defer to our Assistant Planning Director, Robbie Nesevich.
The decision of the Planning Commission shall be final within 15 days from the date of the decision unless an appeal has been filed with the City Council.
Great, thank you very much. I will now move on to our item number four. Before I do, are we good to proceed? Or do we wanna take a quick five-minute break? I know we've got two more items up before us. I'm okay, staff's okay. Okay, we'll continue. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving Agoura Village Development Permit Case Number ADVP 2025007. I will now open the public hearing and defer to our Assistant Planning Director, Robbie Nesevich, for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. During this presentation, I'll be discussing an Agoura Village Development Permit Application received for 29008 Agoura Road and 29020 Agoura Road. Many of you are probably familiar with this property as a restaurant named Mexico Grill partially burned down here a few years ago at the corner of Agoura and Cornell Road. To start, I'm going to be giving you a background of the project, followed by an overview of the project description and proposed improvements. Lastly, we'll go over the code recommendations or code requirements for the project and The existing restaurant at 29008 Agoura Road was constructed prior to city incorporation and was considered legal non-conforming. In 2021 and 2022, two fires damaged a portion of the restaurant. By the time a permit was submitted to reconstruct the damaged buildings, over a year had elapsed since the latest fire, and the new construction was required to meet current regulations. At the time, the restaurant was constructed across property lines with a portion of the building located on 29020 Agoura Road. The two properties were under different ownership, therefore the property owner for the restaurant was required to either apply for a lotline adjustment with the approval of the other property owner, or only rebuild a portion of the building so that it was located entirely on one legal lot under single ownership. After a period of negotiation, the property owner for 29008 Agoura Road purchased the commercial shopping center at 29020 Agoura Road, and the two properties are now under common ownership. A lotline adjustment was submitted and approved administratively in 2024 to remedy issues of nonconformance, and the owner for both properties is now looking to renovate the shopping center and the fire-damaged restaurant to create a more cohesive design. The applicant will be rebuilding the fire-damaged restaurant and will also be renovating the exterior with new windows, Swiss coffee-colored decorative vertical siding, and a new fire-resistant gray metal seam roof. A new outdoor dining area is proposed on the east side of the restaurant to create a more welcoming atmosphere from the corner of Agoura and Cornell. To accommodate additional guests of the restaurant, the applicant is renovating the existing paved area in the rear of the building to provide more parking spaces. New landscaping will be provided in the parking lot area as well as on the project frontages of Agoura and Cornell. An oak tree permit is also required to remediate potentially hazardous conditions associated with three oak trees that were burned during the restaurant fires in 2021 and 2022. Of the three trees that were damaged by the fires, two had significant damage to the canopy, and those two trees will likely require significant pruning to remove branches that are completely dead as they may pose an increased risk of breakage. Those trees will be further evaluated by the applicant and the city's arborist after pruning to determine if complete removal is warranted. The third tree had some branches that were burned, but the damage was not as significant, and its health will not likely be impacted by the required pruning. Lastly, some new tenants begin, plan to begin operations in the center over the next year. One new tenant is a dance studio and café with outdoor dining, which required a separate CUP to be submitted concurrently to this AVDP, and it's actually the next item. To ensure that all new uses in the center will not impact traffic circulation and street parking, a parking study was submitted to demonstrate adequate onsite parking for all proposed uses. So now I'll just be going over some of the facade improvements. So first on the screen here, you'll see the existing restaurant that was partially burned. And if you flip to the next slide, this is the proposed facade improvements for, for that restaurant. And then if you move forward one more slide, this is the new parking area. This is what it looks like currently. And if you go to the next slide, this is the new proposed parking area behind that restaurant. And if you move forward one more, this is the current outdoor dining area. As you can see, this one was burned quite significantly. This, this will be the new outdoor dining area that's proposed. And then lastly, the shopping center improvements behind that are on 29020 Agoura Road, and there's a facade refresh as well. And if you go to the next slide, this is the facade improvements meant to create a more cohesive design that works well with the proposed improvements for the restaurant as well. This is the image of the first damaged oak tree. This is a large oak tree that a significant portion is burned that was over where the fire was, so you can actually see some of the burnt branches on the left-hand side. So that'll be requiring pruning and we'll be monitoring its health throughout the construction. This tree as well is also next to that outdoor dining area, and you can see that several of the branches were burned. And this is the last oak tree, this is near the parking area, and this one isn't as burned as the rest, so this tree should be a little bit more healthy. The project meets all applicable objective standards, including setbacks, building coverage, floor area, and building height, among others. However, in evaluating the required parking for the site, the city's parking allocation requires 151 parking spaces, but there are only 115 provided on the site. The Planning Commission may grant a reduction of parking requirements if unusual circumstances exist, such as the multiple use of a parking area by uses having peak parking demands which occur at different times. A parking study was submitted with the project application analyzing existing usage of the parking area as well as all proposed uses. Parking surveys were performed during morning and evening periods to assess parking availability throughout the day, and the number of unoccupied spaces fluctuated between 81 and 91 spaces, with the most spaces typically available after 6:00 PM. And that's because three existing tenants don't operate past that time. Since the peak demand for restaurants typically occurs from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on weekdays and from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM on weekends, the parking study concluded that there is more than sufficient parking to accommodate the proposed restaurant and the outdoor dining area with a shared parking agreement, since many uses on the site have peak parking demands which occur at different times. And for those reasons, staff believes that the project provides adequate access in off-street parking so as not to negatively impact available on-street parking for neighboring properties. It is also worth noting that there are 26 on-street parking spaces available along Agoura Road directly adjacent to the project site, but those parking spaces can't count towards the required number of parking spaces for the project. For the design, the new construction is required to meet a number of AVSP design standards and guidelines, and a few of them are shown on the screen. The project has a covered entryway facing Agoura Road, which is encouraged by the specific plan, because it provides for a welcoming pedestrian atmosphere. Varying roof forms provide visual interest from the street, and the outdoor dining lighting used will be 3,000 Kelvin, which is a warmer color, and the lighting will be shielded in downward-facing. The project has been reviewed pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and has been determined to be exempt per Section 15301D and E existing facilities of the SEQU guidelines because the project proposes minor additions to existing facilities that are less than 2,500 square feet and the restoration of a damaged structure. No exception to this categorical exemption applies as set forth in Section 15302 of the SEQU guidelines, including but not limited to subsection C, which relates, relates to unusual circumstances that could have a significant effect on the environment. And with that, the recommendation is on the screen, and staff is available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. I will now defer to our commissioners for any questions of staff. Commissioner Stein, looks like you might be urging for your microphone there.
Yeah, not to be a, you know, broken record for me even the last hearing, but parking is my biggest concern. I do know when it used to be the previous restaurants, parking was always a problem. Was there a shared parking agreement between the two owners? Would you have known if that agreed? Because, and I know that it used to be valet parking also when Prime Steakhouse was there, so I just wasn't sure whether or not, if we looked at valet parking also.
You know, I actually believe they used to have an agreement with an off-site property to provide parking off-site, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm not aware of any shared parking agreement before between the two properties.
Because part of, you know, looking at the parking study, I, I just found so many flaws with it. I just personally, done in July, two nights, two days, you know, it really was looking at two of the new tenants in the shopping center. They're theoretical in terms of really how many spaces they're gonna take up, you know, and... know, and so, you know, part of it is, I remember, you know, just parking also always being an issue with the restaurant. So that's probably, my biggest problem is trying to figure out whether or not there will be sufficient parking that will not impact the surrounding neighborhoods. Is there going to be, and I don't know if this is a question for the applicant, but there was a liquor license. Is that, that's not part of this whole thing? Does that run with the property, or is there going to be, do we have to be concerned at all about that issue at all? I believe the liquor license has since expired. So if they wanted to apply for the liquor license, they'd have to come back again once the restaurant's up.
That's correct.
I'll defer some questions to the applicant.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Stein. Commissioner Platz, do you have any questions?
Um, I've lived in this area quite a long time, and I remember there was another fire before 2021, am I correct? This place has been plagued with two fires.
Yeah, it was 2021 and 2022.
No, but there was one even many years before.
I wasn't around back then, but I'll defer to the applicant if they remember.
Well, there was. So, I mean, whether it's bad luck or not, so my concern is fire and whether this new project would be really, you know, fire resistant as much as you can. And how far is the vegetation going to be to the restaurant?
Well, it has, the new construction has to meet all applicable fire regulations, so you've got the fuel modification requirements, and then you also have the actual construction of the building, and that is one of the things that the applicant did to improve fire resiliency was to put a metal seam roof. So all the building materials that they're using are fire resistant, and they're rated appropriately for the very high fire hazard severity zone, and the fire department would be reviewing it during the building permit as well.
Yeah, I would look into that other fire many years ago unless my memory is off, but... So I think it's bad luck, or maybe it's the location where the winds are going, so.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Platz, or sorry, Vice Chair Reinhardt.
Thank you. Robbie, it was nice of you to get me a holiday present because you know that this property has been a bone of contention for me for a long time. Apologies to the owners, but this has come up several times where I have said, why is this still a charred, disgusting mess that we drive by every single day? And I too remember previous fires from back in the day. I also remember when it was Padre, which is going way back in time now. So I'm very excited to see that this property is being redeveloped and to learn that the actual property is now unified with the other plaza. With that said, I do want to echo some of Commissioner Stein's concerns about parking. Again, going back to the previous iterations of restaurants that were in those locations, that was in the original location of this, of the corner restaurant. I keep wanting to say the artist formerly known as with the Mexican restaurant, but with that, a couple of questions. So with the, with the parking survey, that is, that reflects the unified property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So also with that said, I, I am also old enough to remember when there were, you know, when there was a happening restaurant at the corner, and there was also a happening restaurant on, on the other side. I can't remember the name of it. It wasn't, it's the space that borderline briefly occupied, and that's still permitted and I guess rated as a restaurant space, even though it is not occupied right now, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
If I, if I may, I believe that's what the café and the dance studio.
So that would be, okay, and maybe, maybe the owner can clarify in that a little bit more. So I remember a time when that restaurant and the corner anchor of the, of the shopping plaza were both highly successful businesses, and that parking, valet, traffic congestion, all of those things were huge issues once upon a time. So while I am extremely excited to see this redeveloped, and also I want to see the success of this plaza and businesses in this plaza, I want to make sure that we do address all of these issues, and I do have some concerns about the veracity of the, of the existing survey and how we can make sure that there are contingencies or other things that we can do to kind of protect the, the traffic flow in that area. But otherwise, I guess my, one of my questions would be regarding, regarding the new space, and I know you spoke a bit to Commissioner Platz's concerns about fire and concerns about the vegetation and making sure that everything adheres to, you know, new building codes and new building standards. With the oak trees that are in place, there is not necessarily anything you can do as far as like fire mitigation, because those are, those are, those, the footprint of those trees exists next to the building, and they will continue to exist next to that building. So can you talk a little bit about, I guess, the fire danger of having the vegetation there and what can be done to mitigate that?
Yeah. First, I just, I do just want to clarify that the last two fires were kitchen fires, so they didn't really have anything to do with the vegetation that's actually surrounding the structure. That's just the first point. The second one is that you're correct. When there's an existing tree next to an existing structure, the fire department doesn't really consider that in terms of fuel modification. They're just looking at new plantings and ensuring that the new plantings are within the allowable fuel modification zone. But in terms of, you know, whether, whether or not oak trees are fire hazards or actually provide some benefit in terms of fire resiliency is kind of, it's not an exact science, but I've, I've seen some studies that, that show that oak trees actually help prevent embers from catching fire to the structure.
Okay, got it, thank you. To follow, to follow up with that, and I appreciate the clarification, the old building that burned multiple times, that, do we have a, when was that? That was built prior to the city, to cityhood, correct?
Well prior.
That should say something right there. So because, because of the existing fire damage, this is, this is a completely new construction, to clarify?
Essentially, it's more than half of the existing building is what I would say.
Okay, so with that said, okay, I know, I know like new, I know there, like new construction versus old construction, right? Like old construction could be one existing wall, and then everything else is brand new. So I guess what I'm looking for some clarity on is with these new building materials and new standards and having to bring everything up to current code, that there are, that there are, there are significant improvements that will, and I guess I, I know that nothing is 100% fail-safe, but that some of the larger structural concerns that have occurred in the past are being mitigated because of these new standards, correct?
That's correct. The, the new building code in terms of fire safety is much, much more robust than it was when this building was, was originally constructed.
Okay. And then one, and this might be a question for the building owner and not for staff, but regarding the color planning, I do like, I do like the facade updates. I think that the, the treatment goes along better with the larger kind of Agora Village plan, and I'm sure that staff worked with ownership on that. I do have a slight concern about the stark white stucco. You know, it's, it's a clean design, but I, I'm a little concerned about how it fits in with kind of our, our overall color palette in the city and also particularly in that area. So could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so staff also had that concern, however, it's actually a Swiss coffee-colored stucco, and sometimes renderings just throw off the color a little bit. So it's actually earth tone, it's, it's that Swiss coffee-colored stucco, so it'll be more brown than white.
Okay, I think we need a pantone palette in here or some samples in the, we, just back here, if we could have like a little, a little pantone chart, that would be really helpful.
Thank you very much. I'll save a lot of my commentary for the deliberations, but I echo Vice Chair Reinhardt's concerns about the, the current status of the site. I am pretty clear on everything. Parking is one question consideration I have. Obviously, I think, as indicated in the last item, I take a slightly different approach on, in more, you know, a different level of nuance on, on how to consider this, because I do think we're splitting away from thinking about cars as the only sole means to convey people in our city. Agora Road is actually one of the most protected places to ride a bike, so use it. But there are concerns that I have with the parking study. There's a section here, I'm referring to page five of the parking section, sorry, a study that refers to a shared parking consideration, where under that consideration, it reduces the deficiency to only six spaces. Can staff speak to what that means? And I think the way that the consultant provided this to us refers to this as, it wasn't immediately applicable because the total threshold of square footage fell under the required threshold, so therefore, the eligibility isn't applicable, but if that's something that the applicant is, you know, can consider, I mean, that, that dramatically reduces the deficiency.
I would have to defer to the applicant, but I think, just to help you out a little bit, for shared parking, there's a provision in the code that allows reductions similar to what you saw for the Wisdom Center for the Canyon Club, and actually, per the code, it gets reduced by a certain percentage based on either the highest parking use tenant or cumulative 20, 20% of, of the parking spaces of the site for a shopping center that has mixed uses. However, that provision is only for shopping centers that are of a certain size.
Okay.
This particular shopping center doesn't meet that size requirement, but you can still use that logic to say that the shopping center will have different uses that occur at different times, which is why there's still flexibility within the code to provide a parking study and essentially prove that.
Appreciate that. So for, hold on, so for further clarification on that, so essentially what you're saying is there is a mechanism, and the mechanism tonight is for us to approve your recommendation, which allows for a variance in the parking requirements of the city to allow for this use? Given that we can consider, given the fact that there's only a 1,200 delta of square, square foot, 1,200 square foot delta between what would trigger that automatically versus what we have to deliberate ourselves and, and approve for the applicant, is that correct?
Sort of. I wouldn't use the word variance because they, they didn't need to apply for a variance. Your decision will be based solely on whether or not you think the parking on the site is adequate to, to the extent that it will not impact circulation and adjacent properties. So that, that's what your findings should be based on. I will also point out condition number 13, because...
Can you refer to which document, please?
This is for resolution and conditions for AVDP 20250007. It's an attachment to the staff report. The project does contain a condition, and I'll just read that now for the record. The community, and it says, "The community development department may review the parking demand of the site on a periodic basis or upon the change of a tenant. The community development director shall have the authority to deny a permit for a new tenant, require additional parking spaces, or require alternative parking strategies if it is determined that the mix of tenants has or would have a detrimental effect on traffic circulation based on the parking demand of each tenant during peak hours." So staff was, you know, we thought about this and wanted to make sure there was a safeguard just in case in the future, if things are very popping, then, for lack of a better word, we, we could look for other strategies to implement for the owner.
Great, thank you very much. And again, will hopefully be a good problem to have down the road. I, I do take a different approach in terms of my fellow commissioners at looking at the study hours. I don't see a percentage available below 80% during both a Thursday and a Saturday. That doesn't also include the additional parking along Agora Road. So again, I mean, I understand that there's, there's, I think we could reasonably poke holes in the study, but I do think that for the most part, its intent demonstrates that there is sufficient parking. I'll leave my comments and questions for staff there. I see Vice Chair Reinhardt with a question.
Thank you, Chair Roth. Robbie, with that said, I appreciate the, the additional details on the fact that based on the tenancy, the conditions can change, because I, I think that's a really important distinction to make, because that, that addresses a large portion of my concern. But my follow-up to that, and, and I understand where Chair Roth is coming from, that, that we are moving to a, I guess, less reliant state on, on cars, but I also, and single-car trips. And when this, at the peak of the activity in this center, you know, in the early aughts, it was before the advent of, you know, rideshare and, and I guess more ubiquitous forms of getting to, you know, locations. But with that said, I do again remember when this, when both of these centers were extremely busy, and it caused a lot of nuisance for the neighbors, and it caused a lot of nuisance for the other surrounding businesses. So with that said, one of the things I guess I wanted to address is, is looking at the hours that the survey was done, and is there a way to, I guess, talk about, like, if a restaurant goes in at that corner, are there going, you know, I understand the staggering that there's certain businesses that are going to have more, you know, you know, peak hours, et cetera, but like, all of the restaurants that have been open at that corner have been, have had a, like, bar atmosphere and have been open much later than the average restaurant in Agora Hills is open. And that's not a bad, that's not a good or bad thing, it's just a, it's just a fact, right? So that's when we've seen much, you know, significant, you know, significantly higher traffic in that plaza is, you know, on weekends, because there's, you know, live music there or there are other things that are occurring that are keeping people there later and that the, the hours and the activity are different. And so with that said, what would trigger, I guess, a reassessment of this? And, and, you know, and I know that this is all highly speculative, because the restaurant that could go in there could be, you know, something that closes at 9:00 p.m. and is, and it is very banal as far as, you know, atmosphere. I'm sure it'll be a fabulous restaurant, and I, you know, would love to go there, but it's, it's one of those things where I just want to look at, like, what are some, what are some of the, I guess, like, protection points that we could make sure, because I also want to be very cognizant of the other businesses in that plaza and making sure that we're addressing everything, you know, holistically as far as, as far as what that experience is like.
Yeah, so there, there's always going to be a trigger as soon as somebody applies for a business license. So in order to operate within the city, you need a business license. So if a new tenant comes in, we require a business license, and at that point, that's when the community development department reviews for parking. So we would always know before a tenant goes in whether or not it is consistent with this parking study, whether or not there's, it's going to have more required parking spaces or less required parking spaces than what we've already seen within the study. And then also, at that point in time, we will also have had more time to see more tenants come in and how, how the parking's currently functioning.
And, and that would also include looking at hours of operation?
Absolutely.
And making staff recommendations based on, based on what the expected hours of operation would be?
That's correct.
Okay, that clarifies. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Chair Reinhardt. Commissioner Stein, Commissioner Platz, any further questions for staff?
Yes, again, it goes to the parking. We also will be hearing about a dance studio, so I have a lot of questions regarding that operation, because it was not really clear hours of... because it was not really clear hours of operation, how many people, how many people they're going to maybe have at the cafe. And that will then have an impact. Has the city already looked at what its impact would be on parking? And it does not affect this parking study? Because how I read the parking study, it was pretty theoretical about the two vacant spaces.
Yeah. So, and let me also just clarify, the parking study was purely based on code requirements for parking. And it took, it did take into consideration the new cafe and dance studio, and that's why both of these items are coming tonight. Because the, both of these items were looked at holistically and everything was included in the parking study.
And then that one condition, I think, was you said thirteen, if you look at it and parking comes in issue, I mean, could that be where the city comes back and say, we think maybe valet parking is going to be necessary? Because I believe Padre used to have valet parking. I'm not even really sure where they parked. And I know that Prime Steakhouse had prime parking, but again, those created issues itself with people trying to get around the parking. So I just always want to make sure that we are addressing it. I mean, yes, it's, it's a great problem to have that you pull into a parking lot and the businesses are all doing so well that people are leaving. But I just want to make sure that the other businesses, you know, like the salons, are they going to have sufficient parking? You know, if, God forbid, you know, the businesses are using up more of the spaces. So part of me also wants to make sure that the existing uses are going to be protected by this, you know, shared parking agreement.
Yes. That's the short answer. I mean, it, the condition allows a certain amount of discretion for the Community Development Department. Ultimately, in that case, it'd be up to the property owner to tell the Community Development Department what they plan on doing. We obviously try to make suggestions, you know, we're heavily involved in economic development as a city as well, so we obviously want these businesses to do very well. But ultimately, if we saw something that, that we thought was impacting health and safety or traffic and circulation, we would, we would get involved and ask the property owner what their plan is.
Okay. I'll defer the rest of my questions to the applicant.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Platter, any further questions? Great. Fantastic. Do we have any ex parte commission, communications from commissioners to disclose that? Great. Hearing none. I will now defer to the applicant. I believe that's you. You and/or your representatives will have a total of fifteen minutes for your presentation. Please adjust the microphone and you will watch for the red light on the podium. When you see the yellow light, you will have one minute to wrap up your comments, but I believe our city clerk is going to come in and intervene for a second.
Just to, just to back up on that, there will not be any lights at tonight. So when you get close to about three minutes beforehand, I'll let you know. And then give you a minute before we turn off the microphone.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for being with us.
Good evening. My name is Robert Matola. I'm the president of R M Designs Residential and Commercial Planners. This is Miroslav Perik. He's our project lead for this particular project. We've been designing buildings for thirty-six years. We've designed over fifteen hundred and eighty-two successful commercial and residential projects around Southern California, at least three dozen here in this city. I will say, Commissioner Reinhardt, we are now reaching the crescendo of excitement for projects this evening, as motivating as the earlier projects were. I do want to thank, in particular, the planning department here, specifically Robbie Mesovic. This project started off originally with a completely different design firm. Back in February of twenty twenty-one, the first fire had occurred. Subsequently, in July of twenty twenty-two, second fire had occurred. And the owner, Mike Malamet, for the project, who's owned this building for probably decades now, hired a different firm to get on board, to try to put together all of the plans necessary to present this project right here in front of you. That occurred for a year and a half, close to two years on this project. We were brought in after that second year period in, I would say, mid to late twenty twenty-three to basically kind of pick up where they had left off. They didn't give us much to start with, so we basically scrapped their initial design, scrapped the project, and really kind of started utilizing our whole team. The one thing I will say is the, the process, you know, of this, giving Agura Village specific plan requirements, there are two hundred and twenty-seven line items on the actual, I don't know if you've all have read all two hundred and twenty-seven exhibits, studies. You've probably authored them, possibly. It's quite intimidating, so I understand why the first team probably waved the white flag after a certain amount of time. And the ownership obviously got quite, you know, frustrated with the process. Once we got on board, we hit the ground running. And basically, just kind of a brief synopsis, I'd like to kind of first go over, of course, the, the first project, which is our Fire Restoration. Mike Malamet and I, obviously, and my whole team here are pretty pleased to be meeting with you guys this evening, considering the site has remained severely damaged and vacant for more than four years following the fires at Mexico Grill. For several decades, this property served as a well-known dining and entertainment destination for, within the community, though it had experienced gradual decline leading up to its vacancy. You had mentioned it was Padre at one time. I met my wife at Padre. From the nineteen ninety-eight till probably mid-two thousands, it was the spot. And there were people from different communities arriving. There was valet parking. There was, you know, great food at the Italian restaurant. There was a martini lounge. There was outdoor seating areas and dining areas. And basically, conveniently, this newly designed restaurant that we're proposing would sit directly across the street from the new Bellamy multifamily development that basically consists of two hundred and seventy-eight residential units currently under construction. With this scale of new housing arriving, the site and upgraded restaurant design is positioned to serve as a key high-end dining experience for this immediate neighborhood. The design vision for us was to create a purposeful, high-quality, and flexible restaurant with an exciting bar space, one that can accommodate a range of future tenants while maintaining a clear architectural identity. The building's designed in a bold contemporary ranch style that harmonizes with the surrounding landscape and reflects high architectural standards. The goal was to complement and elevate the site with a durable, refined, and timeless architectural presence, supported by a cohesive landscape plan that thoughtfully integrated the building among the existing heritage of large oak and pine trees. The project also incorporates stormwater management and harvesting strategies to reduce runoff and limit demand on existing storm drains. The building's been developed as a true four-sided design with consistent detailing and deliberate attention given to every elevation. The front primary facade and outdoor dining areas feature thickened exterior walls around door and window systems to create strong shadow lines, depth, and a sense of permanence. On the east side, the dining terrace sits near a beautiful hundred-year-old oak tree, providing an enjoyable outdoor dining experience that connects the project directly to the site's natural features. All rooftop equipment is fully screened by a parapet wall cladded to match the standing seam metal roof, ensuring it remains virtually invisible from the parking area and public viewpoints. Fire protection has been a major priority of our design. We've utilized Class A fire-rated materials throughout the exterior, including a standing seam metal roof system, enclosed eaves, TimberTech siding, which is one of the only Class A fire-rated composite and PVC sightings available, full sprinkler systems throughout the building, and black metal-framed window and door systems with tempered glazing, all of which substantially improve the building's resilience. This proposed project reinstates an important community dining and gathering destination, and we feel that it responds to the evolving community and delivers a well-crafted, fire-resistant, and architecturally cohesive design for this prominent corner. We'd be happy to take any questions you might have regarding this first structure.
I think we should just let you continue for both projects, and then we'll ask questions of both, if there are questions of both. Thank you.
Excellent. The second facility, which is basically the adjacent property to the west, known as the Agura Village Center. This, this center has seen limited activity over the past decade due to prolonged poor management and maintenance. Our, you know, client, the property owner, had actually acquired the Agura Village Center specifically because there was a problem with parking at his restaurant at the Burn Fire Restaurant. He tried to make and negotiate an agreement with what was going to be a new owner who is in the process of possibly purchasing the property. The, the property was in disarray. The original owner had no money to actually upgrade the building. They were losing tenants. As you guys probably saw, it is probably the emptiest parking lot in the city of Agora Hills. And when he acquired it, he acquired it solely for the reason of improving that center, that Agura Village Center, and also being able to have his own reciprocal parking with that center. So one of the things I think that's important to know is, the center now is clearly in need of a comprehensive facade upgrade, obviously. This project provides the opportunity to reintroduce this commercial center as a vibrant, high-quality retail wellness and dining destination. At the same time, the surrounding area also is experiencing some significant, significant growth, notably Bellamy multifamily development, again, across the street, which add those two hundred and seventy-eight residential units. This influx of residents increases the demand for modern, high-quality retail service and dining options, positioning Agura Village Center to become a relevant and convenient amenity for this evolving community. The core objective is to transform this center's dated nineteen nineties aesthetic into a more relevant boutique-style retail environment. The new design updates the existing aging brick veneer and tile facades with a cleaner, contemporary stucco finish, stacked stone veneer accents, and refined architectural lines. The existing upper cornice will be repainted to coordinate with the new brighter facade, helping unify the overall composition and reinforce the updated architectural character. Together, these improvements create an elevated cohesive look that aligns with the current market expectations and significantly enhances the property's presence. Exterior lighting will be upgraded with clean black wall sconces that provide subtle decorative yet functional accent lighting across the facades. All storefronts will receive modernized glazing systems, new frameless window and door assemblies that create brighter, more open, and more contemporary retail frontage. Tenant programming has been a major focus of the revitalization strategy. The new property management team has secured a strong anchor tenant, Dance Masters Dance Studio and Cafe, designed by Seppi Malehi of Monkey House Architects, bringing a high level of quality design and daily activity to the site. The dance studio will join existing tenants such as Noe de Trattoria and the established Teague Classical Pilates Studio, resulting in a well-rounded mix of fine dining, wellness, and creative, family-oriented uses. Collectively, the updated architectural appearance and strengthened tenant mix will reposition Agura Village Center as a refreshed, attractive, and functional commercial hub. The project aims to restore vitality to a long-underutilized property and deliver a more contemporary cohesive design that better serves both current tenants and future visitors. And we'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation. Before we move on to public comment, do any commissioners have questions of that, of the applicant? Commissioner Platter, you may start.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm very happy about the fire resistance because I, I believe there's been more than three fires there.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
Right. And so, you know, I, I've lived in this area forty years and fires, more than that, and fires scare me. So I don't want you to have another bad luck situation down the line.
We've tried to do everything to prevent that on the actual design of the building and some of the clearances that we've created around the perimeter of the building as well.
That's, that's great. And the only other question I have is, you're going to have valet parking, so where are the valet parkers going to park?
So, so far, we have no tenant. As soon as a tenant actually occupies the space, we originally had a tenant called The Six, which apparently Mike Malamet had courted, their, their property managers had courted them, and they were going to be able to sign a lease with them. The fact that the original, they signed, they originally tried to have them on board right after the fire, and because the first team took a couple of years to go, that tenant slowly faded away. However, after tonight, hopefully, there are a number of very interested quarters to this restaurant space, the actual fire burn-down space. Obviously, it's on the corner of Agora Road and Cornell. It's a highly visible corner. And one of the things that we're trying to figure is, as soon as we get a new tenant in that space, valet parking will likely be something that is, that is optional for them. Again, I wish the parking analysis engineer was here tonight. He was unavailable, unfortunately. But one of the things I'd also like to mention, which I know Robbie has mentioned in the past, was there are also the additional twenty-seven spaces right in front of the restaurant, which, understanding those are neutral spaces that anybody can utilize, but I have to think, just from a common sense, practical standpoint, eleven of those spaces are directly in front of the front door of this restaurant. And I can only imagine that those eleven spaces will be occupied probably almost solely by the, by this restaurant and possibly the other spaces across the street. So even though those spaces were not allowed to be allocated into our parking analysis, we feel that those additional spaces are actually going to be utilized. The other thing, too, is the adjacent space, the Agura Village Center space. You had mentioned, Commissioner Reinhardt, that, that space, and I remember years back, I believe it was called Chapter Eight. There was another place called Chapter Eight at that time, which was just a hopping place. It also had a huge outdoor dining bar extended area that expanded into the parking lot. So whether it be through poor planning of the past and acceptances and approvals that occurred in the past, they allowed a lot of parking to actually probably be utilized for a space that maybe they didn't do a great parking analysis at that time. Since then, that entire outdoor patio that took a wing out and probably seven to eight parking spaces was totally removed. And the new dance studio, obviously, bringing a different, you know, lower occupant load, a much smaller outdoor cafe or patio area is definitely going to change the old occupant load from when it was a larger restaurant space and they could utilize that whole outdoor dining area. That's no longer there. So some of these things are going to obviously reduce that amount of parking. One of the commissioners, I believe it was Commissioner Stein, you had brought up something regarding the salons that are currently there and hoping that, you know, they're not going to be affected in any way. The current salons there are begging, begging for new vibrant, you know, tenants that will be able to help them actually improve their business. I challenge you all, drive by there on a Friday or a Saturday, any time during the day, whatever peak hours you feel are peak hours for salons or even the existing Trattoria restaurant that's in the corner, and let me know how many parking spaces are actually utilized in the center currently. I think you will find there's approximately an eighty percent vacancy of parking spaces currently. Only twenty percent of those spaces are being used for all of those existing tenants that are already up and running. So I think from a standpoint of us requesting to add a Dance Masters in place of a higher occupancy restaurant, and for us to finally rebuild a restaurant that has been out of commission for four to five years, let's call it, to think that it's going to completely pack the parking lot and our parking area as well as the additional twenty-seven spaces that are on Agora Road, we would love to have that happen. But I just don't think it's going to have the overflow that you feel it's going to have, given the fact that this, the center is already, you know, sixty percent occupied. So that, with that, hopefully, that, that addresses some of it without me having the parking analysis engineer.
Are there further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Stein?
Yes. It's too bad that the owner's not here, but did, did he have an idea, really, conceptually? Does he want to have it be a restaurant selling alcohol? I mean, is it going to be? I mean, is it gonna be nightlife, similar to what I remember Padre, where it was, you know, a very happening place? I just wanna get an idea of what, conceptually, we will be approving, because we're just basically saying, yeah, we'll allow you to rebuild the, the restaurant.
Of course.
So, do you have any ideas?
I do, so, so basically, if, if we can kind of base it off of what today's market is looking for, it's no longer a, you know, large-scale martini lounge, dance place, it's, it, it just doesn't render that sort of geography now and, and that sort of group of individuals that are arriving. I'm thinking high-end dining, The Six is a perfect example, a steakhouse, I could easily see happening in this location, Mastro's, a restaurant that basically will not carry itself into a nightlife like it was during Padre or Chapter Eight, when those facilities were there, and, and therefore probably a much more sophisticated crowd. And, and I would also guess, a crowd that will be able to afford the restaurant as well. Back in the day, I remember I could get valet parking for two bucks, and show me a place where you can get your valet parking for two bucks. And so it's going to be a completely different genre, and, and we're at a totally different generation. That was over 20 years ago. So I think we need to think about who the people of Agura Hills are now, and what they are expecting to see, and, and who's going to open a high-end restaurant. It could be a high-end Italian restaurant, but I know it's absolutely going to have a completely different group of individuals, and it, it's not going to be the kind of party mecca location that it was before. It worked for them from 98 through mid 2000s. It just doesn't really program here, I think, anymore.
So you're only designing the, the restaurant, it's a different architect that's doing the facade improvements on?
So we're designing the actual restaurant structure, and we are designing all of the facade improvements to the center itself, the entire center.
Okay.
Seppi Malecki with Monkey House Architects is doing the entire tenant improvement and all of the designs inside Dance Masters and for their cafe and the patio area, which you'll be hearing later on this evening.
Looks like the color palette was very similar, so it's gonna blend in very well. It'll be almost like just one large property, and therefore I can understand wanting to do shared parking, because you pull in and you go, I'm gonna go to this restaurant, I'm gonna go to the dance studio, I'm gonna go to Pilates, or?
Correct, and the art, the architecture is different, Commissioner Stein. The actual architecture itself is obviously different between the two buildings, because we're dealing with a building that's already there, and we're basically giving it a drastic facelift. If you saw this center now, and even before some of the, you know, improvements, it was basically a Frankenstein monster of materials, finishes, really uncoordinated and unstructured concepts. It, it almost appeared like parts of it were done at different times. So it was more of an eclectic design, which isn't a good thing in architecture. So I think we try to create something that's a lot more cohesive, more boutique style, something that you can walk with your family, go to the salon, take a peek into the dance studio, go have a coffee in the cafe. We, we need this center to be revived again. This center has been really in, in poor shape and really lack of interest for, I would probably say, over 10 years at least. And that's one of the other reasons why Mr. Malamud acquired this center, is he drives by it every day and remembers where, when the center used to have a lot more activity, and he kind of saw a vision for this center actually having a lot more potential now.
Thank you very much. I'll defer any further.
Great, thank you very much. Vice Commissioner Reinhardt, do you have any questions?
Thank you, and you don't have to remind me that Padres was 20 years ago. It's already hard to like pretend I forget them, so. I, I may have left a few brain cells there back in the day.
I know I did.
Neither confirm nor deny, but?
Both of us.
Yes, so, and, and I can understand kind of, you know, that the, the tastes of the, the neighborhood have changed, and I, I can't remember if there was something in between Padres and the Mexican restaurant. I think there was, and I think that was the real party mecca. I didn't go to it at that point.
Yeah, I, I didn't go after Padre. I've never attended that location after Padres.
Right, and so it, it's, it's interesting, because again, it did get sort of this reputation as being a very, you know, like, club atmosphere.
Correct.
You know, which is hilarious in Agura Hills, but?
Yeah.
I, you know, it was one of the few places that was open very, very late. I don't remember paying $2 for valet parking ever though, but I think I mostly did not drive there because I was?
Yeah, well, there you go.
Yes, so. With that said, you know, I know that you're designing, I guess, you know, for better, lack of a better term, a speculative space for a restaurant with the, with the rebuild. And, you know, a lot of my concerns are, are addressed in the idea that, and I think it's wonderful that the owner was able to acquire the other, to acquire the plaza, because I think a lot of people thought that it was all one space.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of how it's presented itself for years, and, and people didn't know that they were two distinct?
Correct.
You know, properties, and that's where a lot of the, I think, friction points came from, especially, you know, back in the day, as it were.
Correct.
So with, and, and having, you know, another anchor restaurant, you know, where Chapter Eight was, and I'm gonna really date myself, I remember being a kid and going to Hamburger Hamlet.
Yes, it was Hamburger Hamlet before Chapter Eight.
R.I.P., R.I.P. Hamburger Hamlet, back in the day.
Yes, yes.
So this space would be open more with like, what we would say are traditional business hours, you know?
Correct.
This is not a space that would be open late at night, or, you know, basically past dark.
That is correct, and that I believe is reflected in the actual parking analysis. That was actually a big element of it, because Dance Masters, and I'm sure Seppi will be able to kind of reiterate a little bit more how many parking spaces they had, they had allocated, but those spaces are limited to a certain amount of, you know, hours. They're not going to be open at, you know, 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, 12 o'clock, when some of the more peak hours of the restaurant may occur. And even at the restaurant, we don't anticipate that the restaurant, restaurants' hours are ever going to be past 11, 10 or 11.
Right.
This is no longer a 2:00 AM hangout location. This is more of a high-end, fine dining. Any of the restaurants that you go to currently, what are their hours? Those will likely be our hours. And that's really what Mike Malamud is, is really focusing on as far as trying to grasp a tenant that meets those criteria. Mike Malamud has no interest in babysitting a restaurant or a nightclub. If you know Mike Malamud, extremely conservative, he does, he will not want to deal with that sort of tenant, and he will pass that sort of tenant up. I mean, he's obviously shown a great deal of commitment to the restaurant in that he acquired a property because he wanted to make sure he could park it and improve this property as well.
Right.
So he's, he's very cognizant.
Do you possibly see like a, you know, a higher-end quick-serve restaurant going in there too, or?
That's, into which?
Into the, into the?
Fire.
Into the corner space, yeah, the, the, the front space. I mean, again, I know we're, we're kind of speculating, but just looking at that space, was any study done on, on breaking that space up at all? If, you know, you had two small?
You're saying the Fireburn Restaurant?
Yes.
We only see the Fireburn Restaurant as being allocated for one single use. It's not a huge space.
Right.
How many square feet, Mirasloft, do you believe that space is? I believe, yeah, actually, it is?
It's been a while since?
It's only 4,100 square feet.
Okay.
It's not a restaurant that is 8,000 square feet that we would really need a tenant to break it up into two spaces or three spaces. 4,100 square feet, very easy allocation for a multitude of restaurant uses, high-end dining and fine dining. We would never split that space.
Okay, okay. And it was interesting to learn, again, it's been a long time since I've been in that, that plaza, that there were, that Chapter Eight used to, I guess, come out to the side. I, I didn't remember.
It actually projected out over 60 to 70 feet. It took a number of parking spaces, which Mike Malamud subsequently added all of those parking spaces back, which increased the number of parking spaces, and then reduced all of that outdoor dining area, which created obviously a much higher occupant load.
Right.
Because you have to park all of those people who are outside. You can't just do an occupant load based off of the perimeter of the tenant space. If you have outdoor dining spaces or drinking establishment spaces, you have to also park those areas.
Right, and you did say that the current occupancy rate of, of the, the shopping plaza, the Agura Village Plaza is, is what?
The, the current occupant load of the Dance Master Studio is far lower than the previous occupancy of the restaurant.
Oh, no, 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 I was saying that, the total, the total plaza, not, not the burned-out restaurant, but the actual plaza?
There are 99 spa, there are 99 parking spaces for that plaza.
Right, but the, the actual occupancy of the center, the shopping center, it's rented out at, you said 60%?
It's about 60% and 70% now, because we just started a, a tenant space for Graystar Property Management, which is the actual company who's building the apartments across the street.
Right.
So he has a, he has a two-to-three-year-long term lease with them as well, because they were tired of working out of a trailer on site, so they figured it's right across the street, we'll rent this space, so now they're probably at 70%. But the largest tenant that's moving in, which is the anchor tenant, which everybody's excited about, is Dance Masters.
And, and the restaurant that's in the corner, the Italian restaurant, that's been there for quite some time.
That restaurant has had to have been there over 10 years.
Which is, which is a miracle unto itself, considering the conditions of the surrounding area.
And, and this is the thing that's a little perplexing as well, is there is an interior-corner restaurant that's inside of this apex, and like I said, go there on a Friday or a Saturday where you expect the parking lot to be really full, it just isn't. I, I challenge any, please, drive by anytime, Monday through Sunday, and you will see the occupant load of the current space, and understand that by us adding Dance Masters and adding the restaurant, you're, you're now, you allocating and figuring that these two spaces are now going to miraculously use 80 parking spaces, 100 parking spaces. All the other spaces are already being utilized for the current tenants that are already there.
Okay, and one, one last, I guess, question, and this, this comes back from our, our, our previous issue with, with Wizens, and, and that would just be, would you be open to allocating some space for, you know, delivery or right-of-way, you know, making it easier for, you know, if there are, you know, multiple restaurants, right? If there's the high-end restaurant, and then there's the one in the corner, and then if maybe there's some other cafe kind of thing?
Absolutely. The, the Agura Village Center actually has a reasonable amount of flow around the parking lot area. It's got numerous areas, it's not like there's one way in, one way out. There's numerous, you know, kind of paths of travel for the automobiles to easily have drop-offs, DoorDash, Uber Eats, it makes, they'll make it pretty easy for any of them. I don't think they're gonna have quite the issue of Wizens, though Mike Malamud would love to think he would be that busy. I think he would be happy just to see an 80 to 90% allocation of parking when everybody's full, up and running. I just don't see it being as packed as everybody thinks it's going to be. And I know that, you know, the, the parking analysis, I wish the parking engineer was here, but he does, he did take that into consideration, and he was there for days and days and days, and he said, does anybody ever come to this center? And I said, well, we're, we're, we're trying to change that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Of course.
Great, thank you very much. I want to appreciate you being here. I said I'd save this for deliberations, but seeing the building in its current state, I think only contributes to the, to the issues with the property behind it. Having the synergy between the two, I think, is gonna be a vast improvement.
Yeah.
As you rightfully call out, there's a massive development coming in across the street, and I think, you know, this is long overdue, so.
Yeah.
First and foremost, just absolutely excited that this item is before us tonight. I think this is something that has been eyesore for the 20,000-plus, you know, members of our community, and anyone who comes in and drives by and is like, what's happening going on over there? So I'll leave that to rest. I, like I said, I, with the parking, I understand that there is a delta between the analysis, what's required, and what we should be considering. I 100% agree with you in that everything that I anecdotally have seen driving, driving past the property, I moved back into the community in 2020 as part of the pandemic, and I've never seen that parking lot more than 25% occupied. You know, I, I think there's just, I'm not necessarily as concerned. A question I do have for the applicant regarding the parking, though, I will belabor the point slightly. There is some proposed use for the future in terms of like hours of operation. I know we're gonna hear from the Dance Center, so we can, we can grill them on that, but I know one of them is for, scroll to it, I believe it's a physical therapist future that states that that will be, excuse me, operating from Tuesday to Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturdays until 4:00, and closed on Sundays. Is that a tenant that's online, that's coming, or is that just hypothetical?
That, that I believe is a tenant that is coming to the center.
And then with that tenant and the dance studio?
Yeah.
What does that bring us to our, the, the general occupancy volume for the, for the center?
Well, the volume for the, so I believe we have a total of 115 required spaces?
I think the occupancy of the, you know, actual storefronts, like, you know, I think it was mentioned 60%.
Sure, well, at that point, well, once Dance Masters is in, and once the second tenant is in, I believe that will put us probably at 90%.
Okay.
And there will probably be one space available, which hopefully, upon the, the issue with getting tenants into this space and trying to find occupants to take these spaces, is when you drive up to the center, it's a ghost town now. The, the building looks like a Frankenstein monster. It looks old, it looks dated, it's from the 90s, you know, it worked back then.
Yeah.
Just doesn't work today. The parking lot is empty, and would you want to open a business in a location that was a ghost town? That's the problem. Once the actual building is renovated and we see this, and we have these big anchor tenants, we have a lot of excitement, and people dropping their kids off to dance class, and, you know, an outdoor little cafe area outside, you now want to possibly contribute to that center, and you want to, to be in that center. I'm surprised currently, I'll be quite honest with you, that they have 60% occupancy currently.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't be there, no offense. I designed this building, and I would be there after, but I, I, I wouldn't occupy this building currently with my office, so.
Yeah, I, I actually don't entirely disagree with you, and I think another thing that's worth mentioning is too, looking out from one of these tenants to a burnt-out building in front of you, right? So I, I hear you loud and clear, I appreciate the, the context there. And just so then for further clarification, once these two are online, we're looking about maybe one unit that's available in the plaza itself that's pre-existing?
Correct.
And then the restaurant?
Correct.
Post-potential approval, restaurants redesigned, additional parking on the back end, which now would have a contiguous, or continuous flow from, you know, the, the restaurant parking lot into the current ABC parking lot?
Correct. It already has that continuous flow now. It's just these spaces were never actually able to be allocated for the restaurant. So that's another reason why Padre and other, you know, locations appeared so packed with parking. They always use the front Agura Road parking spaces, and behind the restaurant, which is limited amount of parking as well, they never had a reciprocal agreement with the adjacent property, this, you know, Agura Village Center. Now we do, or else it probably would have been much lighter. So that, you know, that, that's the mission, and that's why Mike Malamud committed to this.
Appreciate that. So is it your understanding, because the, the way I kind of like matrix this out in my mind of the various uses, the current uses, a potential restaurant, the dance studio, et cetera, it seems like the high-demand peak overlap is actually very minimal.
Correct.
It would be maybe 5 o'clock, maybe?
Maybe.
And with that, most of these businesses will be closing in which, rather, at that, at the beginning in which peak hours for the restaurants would be occurring.
Correct.
The, the restaurant that's currently there, I'm not gonna butcher the name, so apologies to them, it only requires them to have 21 spaces.
Correct.
But their peak demand, you know, essentially happens after all the other businesses are closed.
That is correct.
Okay, including on Sunday where they're all closed?
Yes.
Okay, and then would the same be hypothetically true for the future restaurant?
That is correct, yes. And I also can imagine that Robbie Nesevich and his planning team will also scrutinize any future tenants?
Yeah.
That may be moving into the center, providing that they must provide a proper parking calculation. You know, in all cities, whenever we design buildings, one of the first things they always say, if you can park it, you can build it. That's literally the first thing planning department always asks us. So I'm sure they're going to look at that, you know, and scrutinize every future tenant that's going to be moving in potentially to any of these spaces.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that too, because I know we're applying hypotheticals.
Of course.
Demand, very limited overlapping time windows, and also in a largely vacant property right now, so I?
Correct.
Theoretically hard, because we're going back to, I think, you know, an environment from 20 years ago, where those were? from twenty years ago, where those were, you know, two, two anchor tenants in, in that space, sharing a parking use. I'll also remind folks, the city looked a lot different back then everywhere, and so, you know, the Wizens, I know they're not here anymore, was not what the Wizens was today.
Correct.
I think there's shared demand across the city in a much different capacity than before, not to highlight other neighboring cities, but the property improvements that have happened in areas like West Lago Calabasas, I think there's just a much more shared use in terms of like the nightlife demand that was once then, and I just, I agree, I don't think the city is set up in a way today where that's gonna be hyper-impacted like it was before. I hope I'm right, and it's assure, you know, the reassurance of the clause that was mentioned earlier by Robbie, that allows for, for, you know, the ministerial approval process of, you know, applications and further parking analysis, I think is very helpful to ease my anxiety around that, but I do, I do genuinely, you know, agree, I think we've changed a lot as a community, and I think the region and Keneo Valley has changed fundamentally. With that, I'm happy to relieve you unless if there's any other questions of, I see Commissioner Platzer with one more?
Not a question, not a question, but a little bit of history, the burnt-out restaurant I, I went to before, and it was actually the site where Bonnie and Clyde, the gas scene was filmed, they used to have two gas pumps from Bonnie and Clyde, so.
You, you're right, because in the nineteen thirties, this used to be a gas station.
Right.
It was originally built as a gas station, and, you know, your, your concern, and I remember you had brought up, Commissioner, the fire rating requirements, well, you couldn't have more of a kindling box than the building that was, that is, is sitting there currently, and was built in the thirties and forties and fifties, and it is, it had slowly kind of morphed with a bunch of different additions and illegal, you know, botched job add-ons through restaurants, and it was a fire hazard waiting to happen.
I, I enjoyed.
This, this building's completely different, but you're, you're right, yeah, it was, it was a gas station in the thirties.
Yeah, I enjoyed it because I, I thought it was fun seeing Bonnie and Clyde, the gas pumps there.
They shot it, they shot it at that location?
Not dating myself.
The site's gorgeous, yeah, the site's beautiful.
Right.
That's true, it's just, it's looked, it's been this eyesore for four years now, and we, we want to create what it's going to be, not what it's been this past four years, so.
No, I appreciate it.
Hopefully with your help, we can do that.
Commissioner Platzer, if I may, if we have no further questions of the applicant, we'll, we can deliberate further, I've also erred on to deliberations myself, so, but I want to be mindful of our other applicants for tonight. I will now defer to our city clerk for any public comments, if you have something to attribute to the planning commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker with the conditions that our city clerk are gonna apply right now on time, but do we have any public comments for that item?
We do not have any public comments.
Great, thank you very much. Given that there were no public comments and the length at which we've discussed the item, you're, you have another five minutes to rebut, should you want to, but I think if we're all in agreement, we can continue. There being no further questions, before I close the public hearing, any last questions for staff and the applicant? Oh, okay, so I guess the only question I would have for staff is just, I want to make sure we're absolutely abundantly bulletproof on the concept that down the road in future proofing the, the center, I think you've heard loud and clear from us, generally speaking, the parking consideration is, I don't, I don't want to say questionable, but, you know, we just want to make sure we get it right, I think, to echo Commissioner Stein's commentary earlier about, just thinking about the future of the property development, I just want to make sure that we think that that, that clause that you mentioned is fairly bulletproof in our ability to help guide the property owner and the owner of the, the site on, on, on the right parking.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. There being no further questions, I will now close the public hearing, and we will move to deliberations. Vice Chair Reinhardt, why don't we start with you?
I'm in the hot seat now, okay. Well, thank you for your, you know, very thorough presentation, and, and for, you know, fulfilling my, my holiday wish of seeing this plaza redeveloped, because I, I've bugged staff about it, I think ever since I got on Planning Commission, so that was going back to twenty-twenty-three, it really feels like it's been burned out for much longer, so very excited to see it, it redeveloped, and, you know, we've, we've talked about, you know, the storied history, and I love learning new film facts about Agora Hills and sharing them with my friends, especially people who are visiting, so I will add Bonnie and Clyde to my tour. And staff, I really appreciate the, the, you know, thorough reporting, and also entertaining all of our very detailed questions when it comes to making sure that we're ultimately on the right side of history when it, when it comes to, you know, redeveloping the, the space, so with all of that, and with the late hour, I can make all the findings.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Reinhardt, Commissioner Stein?
First of all, thank you for presenting, helped synthesize my issues regarding the parking, staff, it was a good presentation. I don't want to belittle, but there is an oak tree permit, I believe that we're gonna have that all under control, that whatever construction is going on, there'll be somebody who will be monitoring the, the oak trees, so I would just put that aside. And we have, you know, the restaurant, I am really happy to see that it's gonna be rebuilt, I think it's, it is a major corner of our little city, and it'd be great to be able to see it look brand-new again. To me, also improving Agoura Village itself is, is gonna be, I think, a, a great improvement. And the only thing that I have is, does the parking reduction align with the city's broader planning objectives? And that was ultimately what I come across is, yes, it will meet our, our objectives on trying to have pedestrian-friendly, being able to have restaurants, other uses that are gonna be able to bring our community together, so I can make all the findings.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Stein, Commissioner Platzer, do you have any comments?
I, I really appreciate this, and this is exciting, because I, I think the restaurant site, the burnt-out restaurant is long overdue for a repair and getting it back track, because that area is, is a historical site, but, and I'm happy that you have a lot of fire mitigation, because I would hate for a third or fourth fire in that area, it would be a disaster. And, and the, I remember Hamburg or Hamlet, and then it became Chapter Eight in Prime, and it was a disaster, it became a club scene, and, and these new businesses would add a, add to our city, so thank you.
And just for Commissioner Platzer, do you make or do you not make the findings?
I, I, I make the findings.
Thank you very much, this is Chair Roth, I, I can't reiterate the, the comments from my fellow commissioners, absolute eyesore, this is not only like a Christmas wish, I mean, this is like for me a Hanukkah wish, but it's just gonna be a remark, it's a holiday wish, it's gonna be a remarkable improvement for our community, there's so much going on right there, I know there's a lot of concerns generally about traffic and fire safety. We have a delicate balancing act as a planning commission and as a city to, one, make sure that our city moves forward, right, and improves over time, and continues to be an inviting environment for new families or young professionals, et cetera, and there's gonna be a new apartment complex there, not gonna have any political commentary about that, but there is gonna be an influx of people there, and I believe that, one, having a, a new restaurant is gonna be fantastic, having upgraded and updated facade and, and a different use case with the dance studio potentially is gonna be fantastic, and I just, I'm really excited to see that part of the city improve, I think it's gonna be a seamless improvement over time, right, we've got a park coming in right across the street, so that's fantastic, you know, everything that we just worked on with the Wizens, right, there's gonna be some improvements there, so it's just generally amazing to see our city, you know, have people invest in it and believe in Agora Hills, and it's awesome. I can make all the findings, I can similarly also, on the parking analysis, concur with staff that I think the, you know, moving forward with a minor deficiency while understanding that the matrix of overlapping use cases and times and demand maps, et cetera, generally speaking, with what is just their parking, I think is already sufficient, but then that doesn't include the parking on Agoura Road. And also to echo Commissioner Stein's commentary about the future vision of what Agora Hills aims to, you know, be, and what we aim to achieve, which is a more pedestrian-friendly zone, this absolutely meets that, increasing the potential for different form factors to, to, you know, convey people to the location. Like I said, Agoura Road already is one of the best bike lanes that we have, and the safest bike lanes, connecting to it is a challenge, and I know that's what the, the bike plan seeks to achieve over time, but I think everything that this is presented to us, both by the applicant and the findings, or rather, the, you know, the staff report and the findings there, align exactly with what the city's envisioned for the future, and I think that's fantastic, so I can make the findings, really appreciate you coming tonight. So with that, I, let's see, I will restate the, I'm losing my paperwork here, because it's late, so tonight's recommendation from staff is to adopt a resolution one to approve Agoura Village Development Permit Case ADVP, AVDP, sorry, twenty-twenty-three zero zero five, including an outdoor dining permit to establish outdoor dining areas and a valet service for multiple restaurants, and, oh, thank you. Those kids don't let me sleep at night, and I can't read at nine o'clock. Great, so it is to conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution approving the Agoura Village Development Permit Case AVDP twenty-twenty-five zero zero seven. Do we have a maker of a motion in a second?
Vice Chair Reinhardt makes a motion to take staff recommendations.
That works.
Now I've lost my way too.
Commissioner Stein, seconds.
Great, thank you very much, I will defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Platzer?
Aye.
Sorry. Commissioner Platzer?
What?
You got, you got promoted. You got promoted.
We're all feeling it tired.
Oh.
Commissioner Platzer? Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval four to zero.
Great, I will now defer to our Assistant Planning Director Robbie Nesevich.
The decision of the planning commission shall be final within fifteen days from the date of the decision, unless an appeal has been filed with the city council.
Great, thank you very much, I will do one more check for a bio break, if everyone's okay, we'll just power through. Cool, we'll continue. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the conditional use permit case PG twenty-twenty-five twenty-seven CUP for the operation of a dance studio and cafe. I will now open the public hearing and defer to Assistant Planning Director Robbie Nesevich for staff presentation.
Hello again. During this presentation, I'll be discussing a conditional use permit and major outdoor dining application received for a dance studio and cafe at two-nine-zero-two-zero Agoura Road. To start, I'll give you a background of the project, followed by an overview of the project description and proposed improvements, lastly, we'll go over the code requirements and staff's recommendation. The application was submitted on April tenth, twenty-twenty-five, for the operation of a dance studio, cafe, and outdoor dining area, and the addition of square footage triggered a parking analysis which was conducted concurrently for the development permit for the indoor center. So the product description includes a six-hundred-and-sixty-two square-foot outdoor dining area, the cafe, which is gonna be called Connections Cafe, is called, is gonna be two-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-two square feet, and it's on the right side of the project premises. Builders of a Better World is the dance studio, and that's five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-one square feet, and both of the uses are going to be internally connected with synergy between the two uses. So this image gives a little bit closer look at the floor plans, so you can see on the left, the dance studio with the interior walkway between the dance studio and the cafe, with the cafe patio on the right bottom side of the screen. And this is a view from the outdoor dining area, just so you can kind of see the concept a little bit, from the outdoor dining area, you can see into the cafe, and from the cafe, you can see into the dance studio. The project meets all requirements for an outdoor dining permit and CUP. The outdoor dining space is located adjacent to the cafe in private outdoor space, is ADA accessible, has no outdoor speakers, and a barrier will be provided separating the space from the parking lot. So we've already talked about the code requirements in terms of parking quite extensively, so I won't belabor the point, it's the same, same parking analysis that we've gone over tonight, parking study showed eighty-one to ninety-one unoccupied spaces throughout the day, and concluded that there's adequate spaces for the proposed use. The project has been reviewed pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, and has been determined to be exempt per section one-five-three-zero-one-e existing facilities of the CECL guidelines, because it proposes minor additions to existing facilities that are less than twenty-five-hundred square feet. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a major outdoor dining permit and conditional use permit to allow a dance studio, cafe, and outdoor dining area with an existing, within an existing shopping center at two-nine-zero-two-zero Agoura Road, and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, and the applicant will also have a presentation to talk a little bit more about the design aspects of the, of the studio and the cafe, so with that, staff's available for questions.
Great, thank you very much, Robbie, do any commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Platzer?
Yes, what are the hours of the dance studio?
So it's actually not conditioned to have any specific hours, because they don't serve alcohol, but, and so I'll, I'll just defer to the applicant on, on what their hours are gonna be.
Okay. Great, any other questions from commissioners, Commissioner Stein?
All my questions are gonna be for the applicant.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Chair, I have one question, I, I believe that the prior applicant was, this is just like in the weeds, but I believe the prior applicant was referring to a different name, so I just want to make sure that with what we discussed before, generally speaking, is applicable to this, I know we're supposed to keep items separate, but it's kind of hard in this.
The same thing, I'm assuming that, so when they did their parking study, they began it a long time ago, and so they might not have had the exact names figured out quite yet, but it is the same tenant.
Okay, we can ask, yeah, it looks like the applicant is gonna address that, okay, seeing no other questions, do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? No, seeing none, great, I will now defer to our applicant, you or your representatives will have a total of fifteen minutes for your presentation, when you arrive to the podium, please adjust the microphone, and you, and watch for the red light on the podium, I believe our city clerk will let you know when your time is getting toward the end, but you have fifteen minutes, hopefully you don't need all that, because.
Because it's late.
Thank you so much, but use it all.
Thank you all for making it to nine o'clock for our application, bear with me as well, I'll try to keep it short. I do want to give some background as to the name difference and just like the business background, basically, I, I'm Seppi Malecki from Monkey House Architects also, I'll add that, my client, Lea Hanelin, she's the business owner, she currently owns and operates Dance Masters in Agoura Hills on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, it's an established business, it's outgrown its space, and they're looking to move here, it's a much larger space, it's allowing her to basically rebrand, recreate the same core business, it is, it has been rebranded to Builders of a Better World, and with this rebranding and expansion, she's taking the opportunity to also expand into F and B and have a connected cafe portion to the project, which I'll walk through, basically, the intention of the business and how the design materials will make it hopefully an attraction, and to activate this, this plaza, just as Robert was speaking about earlier, so you can go to the next page. So basically, we're looking to make this a destination for the community, again, not only to activate that plaza, but also to provide more offerings, not just food and beverage, but exercise kind of as a middle ground with what's already in that plaza, and to the new housing development coming, just more things to activate this area. and to the new housing development coming. Just more things to activate this area. But again, in a very holistic way that is, is advocating, again, opposite of, I think, the history of this plaza. It's a completely new direction. We're trying to promote zen vibrancy through materials, natural, basically not only the food in the cafe, but also the materials in the space. Everything is going to be very holistic, organic, really encouraging just the romance and attraction of a dance studio and cafe. So we can go to the next one. I'll walk you through. I also can pause to, to mention the hours of operation for both would be seven to 11:00 PM. They're close to what the hours of operation are for her current business, and so just expanding with the cafe to provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner at a small scale because most of the project is the dance studio once we get to the plan, which you already saw, I'll show you. I'm going to show you the three pillars that we're basing our whole narrative on. One is honesty of materials. Again, when you walk into this space, we want you to feel the integrity of all of the textures and materials, really feel like it's enforcing the, the motto, the themes that her business is, is all about. Basically, calmness, brightness, all, all of the above. So these are some material images. You'll see that our 3D is very schematic, so a lot of these material images is how you can kind of imagine what it'll look like. Can go to the next. Pillar two is romance through lighting and tone. There are high ceilings in the space. We want dramatic lighting that you can see through the storefront that'll pull people in, basically make it an attraction, activate the plaza. Yeah, so soft, subtle lighting and natural, neutral tones throughout. A lot of materials like tile, wood, in their natural state coming together to create that effect. The next pillar, community. So super integral to the entire business is this sense of community. We want to open up the storefront to allow people to grab a quick coffee and go. We're doing the outdoor patio that'll allow you to stay and work for a little or wait for your kids, partner, whoever who's in the dance studio. Basically, a place to hang, wait, all of the above. And, yeah, that's, that's pretty much that one. And then the space itself is very communal, just in that it's a dance studio. It's, they're going to have classes, workshops, a lot of events that bring the community together. So inspiration, we can kind of flip through these. Again, just the natural calm tones, the lighting, the cafe inspiration, same thing. They're two separate entities, but they're going to feel as one, very connected. They have an internal connection with glass doors as well. You can go ahead. We'll bring in vegetation. Again, kind of try to make it a little more contemporary. I think it's really exciting seeing new businesses come in with new, just takes on aesthetics in this area. Sun Rose has done it. We kind of want to just take the, the steps forward for the new housing development, just again, to make it an attraction. You can go to the next. Go on. Patty, outdoor patio inspiration, a lot of different kinds of seating, again, so you can stay for different amounts of time. You can go ahead. The restrooms. And then the floor plan, which you've seen already, I just want to point out that the dance studio is about 5,300 square feet of the total 6,600 interior space. The cafe is only 1,500 interior, and then the, the outdoor space is about 600 square feet. So we're reallocating this space mainly to the dance studio. This is just a kind of ancillary cafe. The use is much smaller than the restaurants it's seen before. I mean, the whole kitchen that was there is coming out. It's, most of that is the dance studio now. You can go to the next one. So now there, there are some 3D images we can just run through, so you can kind of get, again, schematic, but an image of what things will look like being built up. This is from the storefront, which you saw already. This is the storefront removed, so kind of an entry shot into the cafe. This is once you're in the cafe, a long bar. We're looking to serve non-alcoholic drinks, again, breakfast, lunch, dinner, kind of snacks, curated small dishes, and very curated mocktails. This is from inside the cafe, looking toward the doors that will lead to the dance studio. So again, the connection between the two is, is highlighted very much. We want them to feel like one. The entry to the dance studio itself from the parking lot is right here, and then we'll walk through the dance studio. It's a pretty big upgrade from the space that they're outgrowing currently. But again, in here, it's pretty straightforward, just the, the dance floor is taking up most of it, and then we have some back of house spaces that are the next images. That's just back toward the cafe. Again, those doors that are connecting, dance floor. And then these are the back of house spaces, and I think that should be the end of the presentation. Yeah. So all in all, promoting wellness, community, and dancing.
Thank, excuse me, thank you very much. Before we move on to any public comments, do any commissioners have questions of our applicant?
Thank you for the presentation, staff's presentation. I am unfamiliar with Dance Masters. I'm really unfamiliar with a dance studio. The last dance studio I ever attended, I was 11, 12 years old. I had to learn ballroom. I have no idea, is this kids to adults? Is it, you know, class sizes? I'm trying to get my head around, you know, are people, I'm kind of visioning, okay, maybe parents are take, dropping off their kids, then they're going to go into the cafe, and instead of having to drive somewhere, they're now have a place that they can grab breakfast, lunch.
Exactly, yes.
Is that kind of what the division is? But I'm trying to get an age idea of really what the dance studio.
I think the unique thing about Dance Masters is that it's actually all ages. I just recently had my wedding ballroom classes at Dance Masters, which was really incredible. I think that's why their later hours actually work better, too, because I was the one attending the nine o'clock classes because of work. But they also do kids' dance classes. So exactly, like, it's a place where parents can now wait. There are workshops. They do a lot of nonprofit work, so classes for, I think, is it the high school or elementary schools? Go ahead.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lea. Thank you so much. So I, for the last several years, have provided school programs for impoverished school districts. And this is a merger of that plus what I've done with dance studios thus far. So we have programs for children that focus on emotional literacy through dance, social emotional learning, cotillion, things of that sort, where there's a social etiquette and a behavioral etiquette component. We do offer adult group classes as well. We do partner style dancing. We do date night. We do something for everyone. But there is definitely an emphasis on community. We offer classes that an entire family can participate in, which is exceptionally unique. So it takes, you know, mommy and me class and makes it for the entire family. You can bring your grandmother, and that's what we do. So it's really community oriented, and we want to offer something for everyone.
Well, quickly, you know, in terms of dancing, is there going to be like tap, zan? I'm, I'm learning all of this because I'm not familiar with it. But is there going to be loud music when people are, you got 30 people all dancing? I mean, is that going to impact the other uses, or there'll be some soundproofing?
So we've talked rather extensively about soundproofing and being mindful of our neighbors. With the cafe being so accessible, I don't mind if the music is heard in the cafe. It might create actually a rather enjoyable ambiance. The music genres tend to be really respectable, and obviously, we cater to age appropriate, so there's no risk of that being an issue. There are ways to monitor decibel levels. There are devices you can utilize to ensure that you're not exceeding a certain decibel level. I have a lot of experience being mindful of that. So with the respect to avoiding alienating our neighbors, our fellow tenants, that's something that can easily be avoidable. Pertaining to the cafe, I don't find that to be a huge concern. We're going to not be blaring music.
That was just my concern is, you know, you're in the cafe, and you've got this loud music. How is that going to impact your enjoyment of your food?
Yeah, most cafes have some ambient music, so we're just getting a two for one.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Platsch, do you have any questions?
No, it looks very, it looks beautiful.
Thank you.
So you can have all kinds of dancing, ballet, tap, and you, you, do you pay by the hour, or do you pay by the class, or?
So we have scholarship programs for people who can't afford classes, and we offer discounts to people who are of a lower income, because that's really important to me, is that it's something that's accessible to everyone. In addition to that, we offer monthly memberships, where you can pay a certain amount and take as many classes as you'd like. We also offer private lessons, which are per lesson, and we offer more group collected packages, where you can buy a series of group classes for a certain amount.
Can a professional dancer rent a room?
Uh, yes, a professional dancer could rent a room. I don't rent space anymore, and I would rather not, depending on the situation. But yes, a professional dancer could absolutely rent space if that was something that felt like a relationship oriented benefit, if that makes sense. I would not market space for rent.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Vice Chair Reinhardt, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you for your presentations, and, and it does look like a really intriguing business idea to, you know, incorporate the cafe and the, the wellness element and to, you know, reduce car trips for people who are waiting around for people taking lessons. And I like the idea that you are providing, you know, an art and a service, you know, that's accessible to all. So that's, as a former member of the Arts Commission, that's a very exciting prospect. So I think the only question I had was, so earlier you said seven to, 7:00 PM to 11:00, it's 7:00 AM to 18:00. I just wanted to clarify for the record that I was, yeah, because I was like, we're all, we're all tired, but just for the record, I wanted to make sure. So it would be 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM would, would be your core operating hours.
Correct.
The majority of that would probably be earlier in the day.
Yes.
So just for us night owl slash working professionals, if we needed to come in for a PM class, it would be.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Okay. And, you know, herbal tea to help me fall asleep, right?
Yeah, or a lovely tonic. That's all the rage these days. Like, there's all these mushroom, you know, kind of whatever things, so we'll be offering that as well.
Okay. And Commissioner Stein had a question about the decibel level, and that, that was just something that I had, you know, a, a question on, but it sounds like you've, you've thought of that. And obviously, if you have a successful business in the city already, then you understand being a good neighbor, and, and we appreciate that. So I, I don't think I have any other outstanding questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one question, or two questions. Is the current location right next to Winners Pizza? Is that the one on Thousand, is that, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, vast improvement, so very excited to see the development here. What's up? My question was going to be related to the decibels as well, but you seem to have answered that. My second question is, I think it was noted that the, the cafe and the dance studio are two separate entities, just from kind of like, I guess, I didn't catch that before, so I might ask this of staff here in a second, but just want to understand that relationship, just to make sure that, you know, as we consider what the cafe looks like and its current proposal, if there's a different tenant down the road, like what all that relationship looks like.
Oh, no. They, the, the reason for that, well, first of all, I understood, go ahead, because I think there's a legal legitimate reason for why that had to happen.
I think it was so that we do the two tenant improvements, basically because the spaces are going to be divided. They both need their egress, their bathroom plumbing requirements, all of the above. So we're, we're submitting them as two different tenant improvements, but it is one business. Yes, yeah.
Thank you, that's sufficient. Any last questions for our applicant? Great, I will now defer, you can be seated for it now. I will defer to our city clerk if there's any public comments. If you have anything to distribute to the Committee and Commission, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Do we have any public comments tonight?
We do not.
Great. So you have five minutes to rebut, I think. Fantastic, seeing that there's a desire to move on. I will move on to, any last questions for, for staff or the applicant from commissioners? I'm, I'm going to jump in real quick. The, the two that I think that we heard, not to catch you all off guard, this, at this late hour, one would be the decibels. So I just want to make sure, generally, as a business practice for the city, should the decibels exceed, I think, what our, their neighbors might consider to be acceptable? Like, there's, there's some mechanism to communicate with the business owner. And then the second one would be related, which is mine personally, just to make sure, but I think that was cleared up, but that the, you know, the two separate entities, you know, just want to make sure that there's, I think, future proof is one of the concepts we've been working with tonight, so I just want to make sure that's future proofed.
Yeah, absolutely. So I deal with a lot of noise complaints throughout the city, and I'll have to say that a dance studio has never been complained about once. So I'm, I'm not too concerned about that. Typical complaints we get are from car engines or loud amplified noise, particularly outdoors. So this space is enclosed, so I don't think it has that sort of potential to impact their, their neighbors too, too badly. And then, as far as the spaces being separated, I think they already explained that it is a single business, but in terms of both parking calculations and tenant improvements, they're just considered separate. So we took that into consideration.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Great, I will now close the public hearing, and we will move on to deliberations. I will call on Commissioner Platsch to begin her deliberations.
This is a beautiful project, and to me, it looks soundproofed, by the way it's outlined. So, and I really appreciate that you go, you give classes and, and scholarships to the underprivileged and the handicapped, because I have a son who has autism, and he's into art, and, you know, dancing and art are very important for disabled people. And also, I'm a neurologist, and I take care of dementia patients, so art therapy and music therapy and dance therapies. So I think that I can find the motions, and I think this is a beautiful asset to our community.
Thank you very much. And just to be clear, you can make the findings. Is that correct? Yes, thank you. Great, Commissioner Stein?
Thank you for your presentation, staff presentation again. And based on everything that I've seen, it's staff's analysis, the closed dance studio, now that I really understand more of what it's about, and the cafe, I really do think that it can be a huge benefit to the community. I actually see it how it would fit in with the other tenants. My concern with the previous presentation was parking, but I feel a little bit more comfortable that that's not going to be an issue whatsoever. Therefore, I can make all the findings.
Fantastic. Vice Chair Reinhardt.
Thank you again for your presentation and to, to staff and to everyone for staying very late. It's, it's great that we're, we all care so much about the details and that, you know, we're making the community a better place by, by making sure that the, the details are, are in order. And looking at the plan and the presentation from staff, I, I too can make all the findings.
Fantastic, thank you. I can also similarly make all the findings tonight, and I'm very excited about this. I have a, a young daughter. She's out of her dance phase right now, recently asked to get back into her dance phase, and, you know, so, so we're looking. But what I will say, though, is having a cafe attached, I think, is such an element that is so often missed with particular, I mean, we're such a kid-friendly city, family-friendly city, and so often what I see when I drop, you know, one of my kids off at, at one of their activities is parents just running into their cars and working from their cars, and it feels really disconnected and disjointed. Not going to name names, but there's an art studio that we do go to outside the city, and they've recently expanded next door and opened that space up for parents to congregate and work and, you know, mingle while their, their kids are in class together. And it's been an absolute joy to like actually connect and bond with people. And I think the, the sense of community that you, you know, expound with the business and everything is, is absolutely right up, you know, our, our, our city's ethos. Everything is in alignment, I think, with, you know, the vision for, for the area, and I think it's going to be, you know, likening it to what Sun Rose could be, you know, what it looks like, and going into Sun Rose and seeing it, you know, and, and something of that similar kind of nature. I think it's going to be awesome and very warm and welcoming. So I'm very excited. I think, I think we're good to go. So what I'll do now is I'll So what I'll do now is I'll restate the staff recommendation. I'm actually on the right one this time, so we can get out here soon. So it's to adopt a resolution approving a major outdoor dining permit and conditional use permit to allow Dance Studio, a Dance Studio, café, and outdoor dining area within an existing shopping center at 29020 Agora Road, making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now call for our motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve staff recommendations.
Thank you very much, and is there a second?
Commissioner Platzer makes a motion to approve staff recommendations.
Great, thank you very much. I will now defer to our...
So just to clarify, it's the second in the motion, correct?
Second in the motion, sorry.
Thank you very much. I will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Platzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reinhardt?
Aye.
Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Roth, you have approval, four to zero.
Great, I will now defer to our Assistant Planning Director, Robbie Nusavich.
The decision of the Planning Commission shall be final within 15 days from the date of decision unless an appeal has been filed with the City Council.
Thank you very much. With that, that concludes all of our items for tonight, so I will now defer to our staff if there are any staff comments. Seeing none, I'm going to defer to the Planning Commission if there are any additional comments for tonight.
I'm just very happy to see that all the new improvements that are being made to our city, improving, you know, just our whole lifestyle, and I'm just very pleased that we're part of the process to approve all of this, because I think it's another beginning for Agora Hills.
Thank you. Any other Planning Commission comments?
I just want to say thanks to Robbie for finally bringing me the, you know, the thing that I've been asking for, so, and to wish everyone a happy holiday season, and again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for that, yeah, and I want to also echo not only Robbie, but all of our staff tonight. I think this is, since I've been on the Planning Commission, our largest docket of items. I know we've had bigger, more wieldy items, but having four separate ones was a feat, and we got it done, so I really appreciate everyone's effort. Thank you, I know you all made it to the very end, but we had a number of folks here tonight, which is awesome to see folks involved in the process, I agree. Everything with Commissioner Stein and Vice Chair Reinhardt mentioned, it's just fantastic to see the things come before us to really help revitalize parts of our city that's desperately needed. So with that, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting. The next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Thursday, December 18th, 2025, in the City Council chambers of the Civic Center located at 30,001 Lady Face Court, Agora Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned.